All right, you ready? Council come to order. Oh, it's my drink, sorry. All rise and salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for what just stands as one nation, equal, free, and justice for all. Please remain standing for a moment of silence in honor of our veterans, servicemen and women, and those who have given the ultimate sacrifice. Also, please remain standing for what's happening on the other side of the world right now with Ukraine. I don't think I could particularly state what's happening over there, but it looks like it's another war in Europe, and if anybody had the opportunity to see the TV the last two days, it's sickening. Men, women, and children are being massacred, so please keep them in your thoughts and prayers. Clerk will call the roll. Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seika. Simonelli. Winslow. Pettifora. Under the provisions of the open meeting law, for those who are in attendance, please be informed that UMA, Urban Media Arts, will be recording this evening's meeting. So just be aware, there'll be audio and video recordings of this meeting. I don't believe, Mr. Clerk, we've been notified of anybody else, correct? Nobody else?
Nobody else.
Correct. We do have a packed agenda today this evening. First and foremost, welcome to the City Council. I know it's not our first meeting back, but it's certainly our first meeting where we get to see our beautiful faces and see our expressions, so it's nice to have the mask off for more ways than one, and I appreciate the opportunity to open up the city now, I think, in a way that is on the upwards. So, great news. We do have two guest speakers speaking on behalf of two important items. So the first, Art of Business. Clerk?
His diversity, equity, and I think Maria Luiz, Special Assistant to the Mayor, will speak on behalf of this. Will speak on the Black Women Suffrage Exhibits located in the City Hall lobby until March 7th.
Hold on one second. Let me just turn the podium on here. Maria, give me one second. Should be on.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome back to the council chamber. It's good to see everyone. I'm here on behalf of Bibi O'Sla Rochelle, our Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Officer who couldn't be here tonight. Something came up on personal, and she wanted me to make sure that I came to explain to you about the exhibit that we have out here in the lobby. She worked with the North Shore Juneteenth Association to bring us the exhibit here in the lobby. That'll be here until March 6th. So, really, up until the weekend, if people want to come in and visit and really read each of the inscriptions, it's incredible, the lives of these women, and it tells a lot about their accomplishments. But basically, the exhibits here to celebrate Black History Month, the North Shore Juneteenth Association shared it with a lot of other cities as well, so it's been doing its rounds. So it's here in Malden until the end of the week. And basically, it is to commemorate some of the Black Women Suffragists that fought hard for us and our rights back in the 19th and 20th centuries. They played an active role in the struggle for universal suffrage, participated in political meetings and conventions, they strategized and worked so that we could obtain our vote as women. Through their fierce fight for both women and human rights, these heroes, or she-ros, as we should call them, displayed incredible amounts of fortitude, resilience, and courage, and played a most important role in getting both the 15th and the 19th Amendments passed. So, we wanted to be here before the council tonight, too, so that you can urge your constituents to come in and visit. It can also be read through the windows as people are walking by. I've noticed people doing that throughout the week, so we urge everyone at home to please come by and visit here in our lobby. Thank you.
Any questions for Maria Luiz? Click on, so you can hear me. Any questions for Maria Luiz? I did want to certainly thank Bibi O. She put a lot of time and effort into this. She was working on it several months ago. She called me. There was a plan to take a picture with the full council and Bibi O. Just because she's here doesn't mean we shouldn't still take the picture, so if we can take a five-second, a five-minute recess, we'll just go out there and take a couple pictures, and that way, we can commemorate this exhibit for the City Council. Fair enough? I guess I can order you guys to do that, right?[373.02][373.02](Laughter). All right, five-minute recess, we'll take a picture. Be right back.
We have is a CBD garage where we've got a detailed report that outlines sort of a five-year plan. A lot of it's related to waterproofing issues where, when the waterproofing systems fail, it gets to the the underlying steel and tensioning strands, and that's what you see in the picture up above, as well as as some of the coatings on some of the steel girders fail, then they start to rust and that becomes a problem. So we started addressing this under the MRA. They took out a three and a half million dollar loan that's now a liability of the city. But that is just the first step in a multi-year process to address these garages remaining viable. If we don't do it, at some point, we'll reach a point where there's got to be an orange caution tape put across it because it'll reach a critical juncture. So obviously, we don't want that to happen. But it's a it's going to be a big commitment from the city over the course of the next X number of years. Jackson is not as bad as CBD, but has a list of things that need to be done there that's also in the millions. So, you know, put together, it's a these are huge bills that are coming for both these garages to keep them functional. And then the last one is is something that I think you're all familiar with, the but but it bears repeating because it's out there. We will see in this year's budget, the first year of the expense related to the Northeast Vote Project. This year, it'll be a small amount because it's just some interest due on the bond anticipation note. But in 2026, we'll reach the full run rate at about 1.2 million dollars a year. That'll continue on for close to 30 years. It drops down a little bit towards the end of the funding schedule. So, you know, one thing worth keeping in mind is that these numbers are based upon the current interest rate environment. They don't have the ability to to permanently borrow the money until the project is further along and they know exactly what they need to borrow. So what you do is you take short-term borrowing and then at the at the end, you go out and you bond the entire project when you've got the permanent borrowing. And based upon what's going on right now in the world, you could certainly argue there's interest rate risk as rates climb if the timing ends up being poor relative to when that has to happen. So that's a liability that that 1.2 is, you know, probably the floor, not the ceiling, but hopefully rates don't, you know, don't go ahead and take off and run against us. So those are the, again, not a comprehensive list because, quite frankly, we could have talked about the fact that we've got, you know, five schools that were all built at the same time, that are all getting old at the same time, which means all the roofs are going to start to need replacing at the same time and mechanical systems. So there are things that are necessarily, I think, part of the dialogue that we have at the budget each year. I wanted to try to highlight the ones that that may not always fit in there. It might be good topics to be to be addressed by the committee where I think the first goal is to create more awareness and then the second is to start talking about, so what do we do? Right? Do we have a conversation about recommending to the retirement board a modification to the funding schedule? What are the, you know, some of them may not have immediate paths and some of them may. And so hopefully, by putting these out there for dialogue, it opens the door to that conversation. And, you know, talking about it's always healthy, even if you don't have any, you know, an easy answer right in front of you. So I'm happy to take any questions or just defer that to when it's sent to committee. That would also be perfectly fine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Hogan, there's a lot of feedback here. Just because you went through a lot of that very quickly and we... Other way? That's better. That's better. Just because you did go through that quite quickly, I'd appreciate it if you would just take a moment and restate the Chapter 70 section. I don't want anyone who's listening to this broadcast to think that we are underfunding our schools by $10 million and that, you know, we're shortchanging the schools, that this is more of a swap back and forth between the state and the city. So if you could just clarify that a little bit so there's no chaos that happens from the statement. Thank you.
No, it's a great point. And I went quickly because Counsel Condon said, and I quote, "You have 10 minutes and get off." So the, you're exactly right. The question here isn't how much, it's who pays for what portion. So it's, we are fully funding at the required net school spending and then some, the amount that we're required to fund. According to these state formulas, we should be paying more of that and the state should be paying a little bit less than that, a little bit being that $10 million figure. So you're absolutely right. This issue, wherever it goes, doesn't impact school funding. It impacts who pays for which piece of it. And that's an important point for folks to know where this isn't us versus the schools. This is this is really all of us together to try to figure out how to make this work within all the other things that have to happen across the city.
Thank you, Counsel. Hold on one second. Thank you, Counsel Counselor O'Malley.
Thank you for this presentation. Do you envision us looking for new types of revenue sources for this, whether that be a new fee for some type for something or a debt exclusion? How do you envision us actually ever getting this much money?
Yeah, I wish I wish I could give you the answer to that question. I think that there are folks, and I'll bring up the vocational school project, that it has been suggested by folks that that might be something that community should entertain as a way to, you know, to sort of take on that additional expense without it impacting the ability for the city to deliver other services. And I and I think that's the spirit of some of what was behind sort of the creation of this committee is to like have some of those discussions as opposed to just waiting till it's too late, you know, to have them. Some of them, like OPEB, it's such a big number, you know, it feels like a lot of communities are going to, you know, kind of wait until the state takes some sort of lead and, you know, sort of forcing the issue, quite frankly. But I don't know the answer to that because I think that each one of them, on the retirement side, it may be simply that we need to advocate for an extension of the schedule, which many communities have done, right? It would be nice to keep it at 2030, but we're one of the few that has held the line there. So it may be that we've just got to hold our nose and say, let's bump that out to 2035 and that gets paid for and brought down in size that way. So I think each one of them's got a different answer to it, but I don't know that there's any low-hanging fruit revenue sources that we've that we've missed out on, right? It feels like our residents, you know, sort of struggle with some of the, and let's face it, we beat to death the cost of trash and that was put in place to, and no one's been happy with with sort of additional fees. So I don't have anything in mind where you say if we did this, because the numbers are so big, I don't know how you get there on some of this, but some of it is just starting that dialogue, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, I'm not advocating that we, you know, start adding fees to stuff that is basic, but we have a Prop 2.5 rule. We can't, we can't increase more than 2.5% a year. We aren't going to be able to build ourselves out of this. New growth is not going to get us out of this because we're already hearing, why are you building so much? One of the reasons why we have encouraged some new construction because it increases the tax base. The only thing I've heard on the doors, and I'm sure that maybe some of my colleagues could also chime in here, is that our residents have said that they would be okay with a Prop 2.5 override if it was specifically earmarked to things that our community cares about, whether it be schools, lead pipes, the roads. So I think there are ways that we can probably free up some of our existing general fund with these specific Prop 2.5 overrides that are going to go to the things that people care about.
It's an incredibly healthy discussion, I will tell you that, and I'm happy to share with this committee, there's a report you can get off the Department of Revenue site that shows you every Prop 2.5 override that's been tried by every community back to when Prop 2.5 went in place. And I'm not going to lie to you, it's a little discouraging when you look at what happened was folks tried, 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 and then they just stopped, you know, trying for urban communities. But it's not to say it shouldn't be part of the dialogue because everything's got to be on the table, even if it isn't a viable option. But these are big, these are big numbers.
You all set, Counsel O'Malley? Thank you. Counsel Olinian.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Ron. That was a great presentation. I think these are tough things to have to wrap our mind around, but it's good for the community to see what we're up against. I would echo a little bit of what Counselor O'Malley said. I do think one of the questions I get a lot is like, well, we have to pay for it somehow. So can we at least have the conversation about if it's the override or raising, you know, raising fees? Nobody wants to do that, but I think what we see here is some pretty stark reality. We probably do have to start having some of those tough conversations. My question is, one of the other things I hear a lot is sort of how does ARPA figure into this, if at all? Can we leverage any of the ARPA money? It feels like there's a big number that the city's getting on the city side and then the state has money as well. Could be that the answer's really no and these are just not the same thing. We're not, we're talking about apples and oranges, but is there a way that we can bring any of that to bear on this? And then I would just invite you to come back and talk more about that as well in other times. I feel like I'm getting so many questions from the community that would probably benefit all of us and as well as our constituents to dig into ARPA a little bit more.
And I'm happy to come back and have a more in-depth ARPA conversation. The short answer to that is it's only a very small subset of that money, that which we can justify as having been lost revenue, that then is unrestricted. We could spend it in the same way that we could spend any other revenue dollar. Everything else absent that would not fit into the, and some of them are specifically prohibited. You can't use ARPA to pay down pensions. You can't use it to pay settlements on losses. So some of them, they come right out and sort of, and sort of tell you, but but it's really only a small piece of it, which is the revenue replacement piece. Some of that's been used to fund some of the DPW equipment and what have you, but it's it's not the whole 45 million, it's a couple million. So it's, these numbers are big and that number's small.
Second, sorry, Counsel McDonald.
Okay. Thank you, Ron. Very helpful to see these pieces here and looking forward to talking, getting into more detail on each of these as part of the Long-Term Financial Planning Committee. I think in particular, trying to understand, you know, the ways that we're obligated to pay for schools and to pay for the vocational school, are those, are those really taking into account the situation, the unique situation of Malden or of other similar communities? And whether, and if that's not the case, then advocating for ways that that we can make those fair, because I know there's a lot of thought that goes into the formulas as well. So I appreciate that. I had a question, and, you know, feel free to say, well, let's talk about that in a committee discussion, but are there cities that you look to, you know, hopefully that are, like some, not Boston, but other cities that tend to do this well, that do the long-term financial planning across the multiple areas of liabilities and capital needs well that you think are useful for us to model?
That's a great question. So I would tell you that, you know, to the extent that we want to celebrate the parts that we've done well on, as I mentioned earlier, we're in better shape than most, not only across the country, but in Massachusetts, it relates to the pension side of things. There are cities that are 45, 50% funded, where we're, you know, 72, 73, it ranges a little bit every year. So when you look at the communities like OPEB that have actually attacked it, not surprisingly, it's Wellesley, right? So, you know, Wellesley is 54% funded on $140 million liability, right? So it's communities you would expect that that have, you know, the money to address something like that. When you look at similar communities, you know, the Evers, the Reveers, and you take the OPEB category, we're all kind of in the same leaky canoe, right? A few dollars have been thrown in by some symbolically, but nothing that's, you know, material change towards it. The place, and I know Counsel McDonald, you and I had a lengthy discussion about the school funding piece, that is a place that, and it's been on the record, that I think differentiates us from the others and I think is unfair to us and hopefully we can make some progress on, but I think it leaves us more challenged than anybody else trying to fund some of these other things, you know? But but I wouldn't say that we've done a, you know, we've done a better job than most on pensions. We're about equal on things like OPEB. And on the school funding piece, that's a piece unique to us, that if we can solve, will provide us some flexibility to be able to attack some of these other things.
My, oh, this is still on. I'm still learning how the microphone system works. That might be the trickiest part of this, John. Oh, okay, I got it. I got it. Yeah, I'm particularly interested also, not only in just like who's doing it well, but like are there processes or models or like, like behind the scenes, behind the curtain? Like what are they doing as we get started on this committee? You know, if there's, if there's things we should be, ways we should be going about the work in addition to what we're paying attention to, so.
And I'll just say that I truly think that acknowledging the budget becomes focus on the here and now, it's just the nature of the way we operate, and acknowledging this component of it through creating a committee to focus on it, I truly think it's a great first step, right? It's because sitting down and talking about this stuff, it's both informative, but it's healthy, and then it will lead to some different paths. So I don't know that anybody's done that. I know there's another city that has said, I want to create a committee. They all have finance committees, but but this notion of a committee to focus on some of these things that don't necessarily make their way to the forefront, I do think is a great first step. So let's feel proud about that.
Yeah, no, Ron, thank you. I mean, I think it is important as a counsel that we get this information so we can get out ahead of it. I mean, I know I also point about, there's other structural things that are beyond our control. We're going to probably have to address some inflation in these upcoming budgets in terms of solid waste situation of, you know, that's an increasing cost that over the years, that gap between the, you know, what we collect in fees and what we have to put out in terms of disposal cost is increasing. So so there's other challenges out there, but it's always best to, you know, I think the adult thing is always to know and to do what we can so we can have those discussions as a counsel and factor those in as we, as we're working on things. And I think it's also the type of things, I know when Nelson Miller came on, his building aspect of some basic things, sometimes we hadn't updated some fees that we should. And I think Nate Kramer had a comment about some fee that other communities impose that we don't. So that's the type of thing. It is the type of thing we have to have, those things can help out a little, maybe not on these bigger things, but it's good to, and make sure we got to, you know, take care of the basic budget and then, you know, tackle these bigger things as we come. But thank you.
Counsel Winslow? Counselor Condon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I wish I told you five minutes because you gave me a headache. But you look at some of these things and these are problems that doesn't look like we can get away from for sure. You know, you look at the over 10-plus million on the garages. Now, they've been talking about that for years, but what's even more scary, you know that the interest rates are going to go way up, you know? So at what point do we, I'm not sure our debt ratio, you know, what kind of shape we're in here, but somewhere along the line, we're going to have to bite the bullet and pick and choose a few of these things, whether it means go up for a big bond issue or I just, you're not offering any way to get out of this either.
Well, listen, I could spend a half hour and your head would really explode talking about sort of how we're going to try to create more revenue out of the garages by addressing old agreements that are under market and try to, so there are things going on behind the scenes to try to, you know, generate more revenue to be able to fund some of these things. But, you know, none of them are easy, right? They, you know, there are water agreements for those garages that provide people access to space at rates that are just not current and don't allow you to do the investment of the garages. So we got to be creative to figure out how to, you know, how to be able to fix some of that. So there's no easy answer to any of these, you know?
But there must have been, the last couple of years, lost revenue out of those garages due to COVID.
Yep.
Is any of that money qualified to be reimbursed? Because certainly the garages were mostly empty when everybody was working at home.
It does qualify and it was part of our calculation. And then the federal government came back in the final treasury regulations and said, you know what? Forget about all the calculations. You can claim $10 million in lost revenue. You don't have to even figure out the details. So yes, and it's built in there, but but, you know, it doesn't solve anything long-term. We're still going to figure out a way to create a long-term revenue source that allows us to make investments because what happened was they were built and then they were eat and sort of, you know, used and abused, I guess, for 40 years. And now here we are with buildings that have been used and abused for 40 years and now need all the, you know, the money was spent on, you know, valid things, but now we're left trying to figure out how to play catch-up. So it's a big number.
Is there any plan when we're going to address, say, the garages before they come, become really dangerous?
Yeah, so we've had work going on at CBD for the last year and a half, starting with the Helix and the first and second floor, the most critical areas. That was about three and a half million dollars worth of work. And Hannah Swanson and I have been meeting about what the next phase is and how much to bite off and what's the most critical thing. So, but we're definitely chasing something that, you know, when they first looked at it five or six years ago, was a much smaller number, right? So the deterioration gets worse, the cost to fix gets higher and, you know, we're trying to, so we're trying to figure out what that next piece is. We have a five-year plan, but it isn't necessarily that it can do a year each year. So it's more of a five-phase plan.
All right. Thank you, Ron.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Seeing none, hearing none? Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Thank you, Mr. Reed again. And I do want to just reiterate, you know, that the purpose of this was to not only inform the counselors, because there were some things in here that I didn't realize, but certainly the public. And then now we can meet in committee and start looking at some of these issues with a little bit more fortitude and certainly, hopefully have the committee come back and make some recommendations, you know, once a quarter in some long-term and short-term plans to help us address this. And I, hopefully, this is a committee that I think it's not going to, it would be great if it won away this year, but we know these are long plans and long costs so that hopefully this will be something that we look forward to year after year. Thank you. Next order of business.
It's public comment.
And I believe we have two emails, correct?
Two emails.
And one, one person wants to come in and speak in public, right? Why don't we have, I know it's Janelle Devitz, she's here with her child, so why don't we have her come? Huh? Oh, Penelope, I didn't know. Penelope? So why don't we have her for the benefit of Penelope and her parents?
Yeah. So this is Penelope Devitz. She lives at 3 Sheridan Street in Malden. And she's here today to talk in favor of the Dever Park project, which I think is fitting because she's probably going to be the one that benefits the most from it. We have been working, Counselor Condon and I have been working on this since August 2019. The paper before you tonight is for the $700,000 CPC funding. Just so you know, we went out and also got an earmark from the state for $250,000. We have a park grant for $400,000. We got $300,000 in CDBG funds. Yep, let me tell them. Yeah. We did get a commitment from the mayor's office, both in form of cash and hopefully bonding that will come before you again. I'm happy to come and do a presentation when that bonding does come. Yeah, she's excited. But as you know, Dever Park is Malden's largest park. It's 8.1 acres. It hasn't had a huge capital improvement in a long time. The toddler lot needs to be upgraded. It needs to be made accessible. We're going to resurface the basketball courts. We're going to do a lot of infrastructure improvements there with respect to electricity and lighting, safety concerns that the neighborhood has, as well as irrigation funds. The public has been involved in this process the entire time. Pre-COVID, we did a community meeting in person at the Irish American. We had a great turnout, I say. We came together with a master plan with Chadley, had two more public meetings, gotten before the CPC, got the state funding, and we're actually out to bid already. So this is moving and it's moving very positively. It has support from Malden East Soccer, Malden East Baseball, all the stakeholders in the area and the active participants in the ward. And we're really excited about this. So say, we want it. And you can't say no to a baby. So this was, this was our goal. But anyways, we hope you can vote in favor and then again, when we come before you for the bonding. Thank you.
Clerk, you want to read the next public comment?
I am submitting this for public comment at the city council meeting tonight. My name is Amy Friedman. I live at 8 Marvin Street. I am writing to comment on the vote to appropriate $200,000 in CPC funds for the planning and development of an ice rink at the Linden School. This is identified as Paper 70-22 on the agenda for tonight's meeting. I urge the council to vote against this appropriation at this time. No public meeting has been held or yet to hear public comment on the proposed expenditure of taxpayer dollars in use of city property. An unknown amount has already been expended on a feasibility study for this project. I would call on Councilperson Seeker to disclose how much was spent on the study and where those funds came from. The feasibility study concluded that the project was feasible based upon a number concerning assumptions. One, the project would cost $1.3 million, the majority of which would be taxpayer dollars. Two, the project would use city property and involve a much larger footprint than the existing rink. Three, the facility would be closed to the public during, during from November through March, when it is not staffed, and when staffed, would be open for public skate only 30% of the time, Friday evenings, Saturday afternoons and evenings, and Sunday afternoons. The remaining 70% of the time, it would be leased out and unavailable for general public use. For when open to the public, the study proposed charging uses $10 to skate and $5 to rent skates, making it a cost prohibitive for many children's and families. More alarming is that the rate to lease is the private leagues, is less than half of that amount. This means it is public use funds that will meet the annual upkeep and maintenance costs. What I have heard from discussion in the Finance Committee meeting and from city officials responding to posts on social media is that these are just initial proposals and the public will have a chance to weigh in on these during public meetings that will be held. Mr. Cochran had assured people publicly that the goal is to make the facility that will be available for use primarily by the public at an affordable rate. However, that is not what the feasibility study says. If we wait until after this money has been appropriated gathers public comment, you have sunk in excess of $200,000 to the project. If after public comment, it is decided to open the facility up for more of the public and at a much lower rate than the assumption made, is the feasibility study no longer accurate and we no longer know if the project is in fact feasible. This is unwise. Have the public meeting first, allow the public to comment, listen to their opinions for getting a quarter of a million dollars into a project that in the end will essentially eliminate a large swath of public property for use by the Linden School students at recess to the public in general. In general, thank you, Amy Friedman, 8 Marvin Street. And we have a letter. Dear Mr. Lucy, I'm writing in support of the outdoor skating rink at the Linden School. I have lived in Malden my entire life. My wife and I are raising our children in the city, and as a family, we have always spent time skating, and this would be a great asset to our city. I have coached youth hockey for more than eight years and believe the ice rink will be beneficial to the program. An outdoor ice rink would benefit everyone in Malden. It'll be one of a kind in our neighborhood. Please feel free to reach out to me if you have any questions. Sincerely, Dino Summers, 36 Gilbert Street, Malden.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Any other public comment? Next order of business.
Papers 51-22 minutes of the meeting of February 8th and Paper 52-22 minutes of the meeting of February 15th.
Have these, I did see some emails, correspondents going around with some corrections. Have they been already updated in this approval minutes?
I didn't get to any email.
Counsel Winslow, did you have a, did you have a correction on the minutes?
I didn't.
Oh, that was the last one? Maybe I just confused him, sorry. Okay, just want to double check. On Counselor Condon's motion to approve the minutes, all for the minutes of February 15th and February 8th, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Minutes are approved. Next order of business.
Sorry, I thought there was one today. Paper 53-22, mayoral reappointment, Catherine Price, 30 Tough Street, Malden. As a member of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund Board, said term to commence upon confirmation by the city council and to expire on January 31st, 2024.
On Counsel Simonelli's motion to refer to the Appointments Personnel Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred to the Personnel and Appointments Committee. Next order of business.
Paper 54-22, council reappointment, Enrique Cesara, 534 Broadway. As a member of the Stadium and Athletic Field Commission, term to expire June 1st, 2023.
On Counsel Simonelli's, oh my God, I can't even say your name today, Chris. On Counsel Simonelli's motion to refer to the Appointments and Personnel Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred to the Personnel and Appointments Committee. Next order of business.
Paper 55-22, council reappointment, Schoon Carrington, 551 Lynn Street, Malden. Term to expire, that'd be to the Board of Health. Term to expire, March 22nd, 2025.
Okay, so let's get that correction, that she'll be reappointed to the Board of Health. Still going to the same spot, though. On Counsel Simonelli's motion to refer to the Appointment and Personnel Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Ayes have it. Next order of business, referred to Personnel and Appointments.
Paper 56-22, council reappointment, Kathleen French, 596 Highland Ave, Malden, as a member of the Board of Assessors, term to expire March 1st, 2025.
Okay, once again, on Counselor Semenelli's motion to refer to the Appointment and Personnel Committee, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred. Next order of business.
Paper 57-22, petition secondhand deal upon broker, Leah Tienda, 45 Lebanon Street, secondhand deal of new.
On Counselor Seeker's motion to refer the petition to license, all in favor? Second, okay, do we got a second on Counselor, who did that? Counselor Winslow? So on Counselor Winslow's motion, second, uh, referred to license, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred. Next order of business.
Paper 58-22, petition livery, David Gustav Elise, 230 Bryant Street, Apartment 3, Malden, it's one vehicle, it's a renewal.
Okay. Counsel, Counselor Seeker's motion to refer the petition to license, second by Counselor Condon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred to license.
Paper 59-22, petition outdoor park and open-air parking lot, River Auto Sales, Inc., 77 Eastern Avenue, 30 spaces, it's new.
Counselor Seeker's motion to refer to license, second by Counselor Condon, all in favor? Oh, oh, sorry, I didn't see the light. I'm looking down. Counselor O'Malley, before we take that vote.
I just had a question. Um, do we have a moratorium on any license? Didn't we do a moratorium on something?
Yeah.
And that's over now?
Counselor Seeker, can you just bring your mic on so we can hear, everybody can hear you, sorry.
The, the, Counselor O'Malley, the moratorium's over.
And we, did, did anything come of it, or?
Uh, yes.
Oh, offline, we'll talk about it, thanks.
Yeah. I can briefly, really fast, tell you. We limited the amount of Class 2 dealers' license to 27. Um, I have City Clerk, uh, Lucy, looking into that to see how many that are available at the moment, because over the course of the last 18 months or so, a bunch of them actually fell off after we, um, you know, we raised the fees from $100 to $200. There's now, um, applicants now have to provide a quarry form where they didn't have to before, and plot plans, um, dealers, um, they needed dealers' plates, so, um, and we gotta work on a few more things, but for the most part, it, it cleaned it up quite nicely. Did exactly what we were hoping that it was going to do. So, yes. I think it's been about a year now that it's been off. It's been, it, was it, so it might've been right before the pandemic. I feel like, yeah. So, so far, so good. Alrighty.
So, let's go through that again. On Counselor Seeker's motion to refer the new applicant to license, second by Counselor Condon, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items referred to license. Uh, next order of business.
Paper 60-22, order in compliance with the court's order by Justice Camille Saraf of Fe, February 7th, 2022. This order of the city council will be referred to the Public Property Committee for the review of 5G antenna or on utility pole 2452, adjacent to 3739 Willard Street, Malden, associated with Paper 581-21.
Yeah, we do have, we do have one of our Assistant City Attorneys, this is Ahie, here to speak. There's no, if there are no, uh, anybody against it? Counselor Winslow, do you have a question? So I'll, I'll go to you first. Counselor Winslow.
Um, well, I just have a couple of comments to begin with. First of all, as Chair of the Public Properties Committee, I was surprised to see this matter was put on the agenda without ever having the courtesy of reaching out to me as the, um, that, uh, Chair of the committee. You see in every other matter that's getting referred to committee, the Chair is listed as the sponsor, I'm not, so I think that, I don't understand that. Uh, I'm also say, as, as we he, will hear, um, this matter is, is litigation, so, um, I, my, uh, I, I just cannot think we can proceed without going into executive session ultimately on this, so, um, that, that would be, uh, my type of thing. We have privileged memos that have come here. Um, so, the standard thing in terms of litigation is to discuss those matters in executive session, so, um, I think that I would make a motion now to, um, defer this discussion into an executive session, because that's typically what we do with litigation matters, so, um, so that, that, uh, that we could come back next week and have our council discuss this, but, um, you know, this is a matter of litigation. Um, if we proceed to have some other hearing, there's a potential that we will get, this will go to court, so we should know and be able to discuss fully and in confidence, um, with our attorney about what the strategy should, we should do as a city council, considering this is a litigation matter. This order is only an interim order, and so, um, it's potentially can go back to court, so before we make a decision, we should be fully informed in an executive session on this, so that would be my motion, that, um, that before we actually elect the councils, that our attorney speak, that we, um, uh, refer this to executive session so that they, we can discuss this matter as a matter of litigation in executive session.
So, so I'm clear, we're not gonna have the Assistant City Attorney speak, correct?
We, uh, only if we, and I'm saying this now, so we would have him speak in executive session rather than here.
Fair enough, counsel. Okay, let's take the roll call. So on Counselor Winslow, discussion, Counselor Seeker.
Shouldn't we listen to the city solicitor to see if this even warrants an executive session? I, we're talking about poll here, we're not talking about a particular person or somebody's character. I thought that's the ultimate reason why we go into an executive session is because we're talking about a person, we're talking about telephone poll. Is there a reason to go into executive session to have this discussion?
Well, we can't, I can't ask.
We're not talking about a person, so could the city solicitor answer my question? Is this something that?
Hold on, there's a, there's a vote though on here, in all fairness, I will take, we'll take the vote, and then if you don't wanna hear from, from them?
Well, my vote will determine, how I'm gonna vote is gonna determine how the city solicitor answers my question. Does anybody have any objection to hearing from the city solicitor? Us, I'm just, when I got the email earlier today, I was just a little confused, because usually we go into executive session because we want to protect somebody's character and a person. We're discussing a telephone poll, so I'm not quite sure how that we need to go into executive session to discuss it when it, you know, everybody talks about transparency, and we're gonna go behind closed doors to talk about a telephone poll, when the telephone poll could potentially, I, I just wanna hear from the solicitor if.
Okay, I do have, I, I'm gonna let everybody speak, so hold on one second, so Counselor Seeker, you're all set, so I'm gonna go to the next one, I believe, is Counselor Hayes. Counselor Hayes?
Um, thank you. I actually was going to ask a question about that, I wasn't sure, do we go into executive session just based on the fact that we are in litigation? I'm, I'm unclear on that.
There are certain reasons why we can go into executive session. We cannot go into executive session today because it was not docketed, and the reason why this was put on the docket, I'm trying to be very clear so that I don't step into any, um, with the, with the lawsuit, is there was, it was a hearing, uh, we didn't know the outcome of the hearing, and with the timetable, I wasn't able to, I, I don't have a problem going into executive session, but I also don't see the harm of referring it or making another mess, because at the end of the day, I don't think the facts are gonna change, but that's fine. So there are certain reasons, Counselor Hayes, we go into executive session. If we elect to do so, it would be docketed for next week, we would leave this, this, um, we would leave the council chambers, go in the back and have a discussion to talk about it, and then make the next steps.
Okay. Would we be able to ask, um, our representative here what his thoughts are on going into executive session, or is that still?
That's, that's the debate happening right now.
Got it.
You, you all set, counsel?
Yes, thank you.
I'm gonna let everybody else speak. Counselor Semenelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, we are currently in, in litigation at the moment. Am I correct? Mr. President?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We, we currently are in litigation.
I, I don't know the answer, I just, I can speak to the, yes.
Yes. So I would think that it, it would be appropriate if we go into executive session when we're in the middle of a litigation.
Counselor Semenelli, you all set? Counsel O'Malley.
Uh, so I agree about executive session, but I also agree if, if Counselor Seeker would like to hear nothing that is sensitive from our solicitor, that I, I think you'll be able to stay within that, that, that guardrail. Um, I see no harm in, in letting the Assistant City Solicitor speak.
Okay.
Especially if it's gonna convince people who are on defense.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Murphy.
Thank you, Mr. President. I too would like to hear from our, um, city solicitor. Normally, um, we do have a representative from that department that comes down to us and explains that it is appropriate to go into executive session.
Sorry about that.
So I would like, I would like the answer to that question before taking a vote also.
O'Malley, excuse me. Counselor Winslow, I apologize, I'm trying to keep the feedback down, so I'm shutting off mics. Counselor Winslow.
No, I, I certainly appreciate that, um, even before executive session, having some explanation of what the litigation is and where that stands in court, but in terms of, my concern, this order is beyond, um, it, it's, it's making a decision about how to handle the litigation, and I think that's what I would like to have discussed, um, in executive session, 'cause there's some various options here that we have, and I think that we should discuss that as, as any litigation typically would be in executive session. So, um, so I think that's, 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 uh, you know, we, we're entitled to that, and I just think that, um, you know, there's various options, and I am concerned as Chair, um, um, that depending upon the choice that would be made, that, um, we would be starting to have a hearing that, um, could be subject to litigation, so we should discuss that, um, as a council before we make any referral. That's my recommendation, so, but obviously, I, I, I'm supportive of having our city solicitor, uh, talk about what this, what, what's been filed and what this order is, so, um, but like in terms of the action we should take on this order, that should be something we discuss in executive session. Thank you.
Counselor Winslow, thank you. Counselor Condon.
Thank you.
Hold on, Mr. President, hold on, thank.
Yeah. Thank you, but, uh, I, I think that it's safer, and I'm not sure if we'll be in violation of the open meeting law by discussing this any further tonight, but I'd like to see it on the docket next week. Simple question, council votes to go into executive session due to pending litigation, and, uh, I don't think we, I think we should cease the discussion now before we violate the open meeting law.
All right, so, so we're gonna take a vote, so we don't want the city solicitor speak, correct?
I would like to. Yeah, no.
Okay, so, if anybody raise any concerns, I'm gonna allow the Assistant City Solicitor speak. Mr. Z, please come to the podium, stick your name and address to the record.
Good evening, Mr. President. Hold on one second, Mr., I'm trying to keep the feedback down for some reason.
Good evening, councilors, Mr. President. Uh, so, the way this litigation started was back in June 29th of 2021, the city approved a installation by Verizon of an antenna on a pole on Willard Street. Um, that particular pole was actually supposed to be on the prior week's agenda, but was for some reason inadvertently left off. So, it was added on June 29th instead of June 22nd. Because of that omission from the June 22nd agenda, there was some concern about not all the abutters getting proper notice. As a result of that, uh, there was a, and a, a request that Verizon, uh, either change the location of the antenna, uh, or find a, find a new pole somewhere else. In December of last year, just a couple of months ago, the city council voted, uh, unanimously actually, uh, on an order that Verizon remove that antenna from the particular pole. That was on December 22nd. As a result of that, there currently is no approval for the, that particular antenna on the Willard Street pole. As a result of that order in December by this council, Verizon filed this litigation, and they sought a number of things. This is all a matter of public record in court, it's no secret here. They sought a number of things from the court. They wanted, uh, an injunction or order prohibiting removal of the antenna, and they wanted a number of other things. The only thing that the order of the court granted them at this stage was, uh, that the antenna, in the meantime, could stay up on the pole, it didn't have to be removed. Nothing else was, was granted. Uh, it didn't, one of the things, for example, they, they were seeking, Verizon was seeking, was they wanted the building inspector to issue an electrical permit, uh, approving the installation of the antenna and the electrical equipment. The judge did not grant that. Instead, what the judge ordered was for the city to, uh, expeditiously schedule and undertake the meetings and processes necessary, and in accordance with custom and practice of like approvals sought by Verizon Wireless, et cetera, to address the approval sought for the Willard Street pole. So, uh, executive session is typically to discuss litigation strategy and whatnot. This, what I wanna explain to the council right now is, this isn't about litigation strategy. This is about compliance with the court's order. And there's a couple of, you know, there may be more than a way to do that, but it's not about litigation strategy, it's about compliance with the court's order, and the court's order is pretty, pretty specific. Uh, you know, there's a couple of options here. One was what's stated on the agenda is to refer this to the Public Property Committee for, for action, and then it would come back to the city council. Um, or another option would be to schedule, uh, a public hearing, giving proper notice to all the abutters, uh, for this antenna, and schedule it, you know, in a couple of weeks before the city council itself. Uh, that would circumvent the whole, uh, routing it through the Public Property Committee, uh, route. That might be even more expeditious, and the judge, uh, might find that even, uh, more satisfactory, because it's more expeditious in complying with the court's order. Uh, but, that's really, that's really all this is about. It's going through the process of holding a public hearing, notifying the abutters that should be notified, because there was some concern that they weren't notified last year when the, uh, the antenna installation was approved. Going through that process as the judge ordered, and, uh, and completing it, and taking a vote, and taking action on it. And, um, if there are no questions, I think that's really.
Okay, do I have questions for the Assistant City Solicitor? Mr. Z, okay, I believe Counselor Linehan is her hand, wait, Counselor Winslow was first, Counselor Winslow.
So, um, uh, solicitor, now we have, uh, the, the plaintiff in this case, Verizon, has become aware of this, uh, order that is before us, and they have now, um, filed an objection with the city, right? And that because this, the judge reserved decision on part of their request, I mean, isn't this amongst litigation? And if we proceed with this order without further discussing this, we, this is potentially litigation, so, so making a decision here is related to what we do in litigation, right?
Well, we're already in litigation, because a lawsuit's been filed against the city. Uh, I, I mean, I'm not sure, I don't wanna just, you know, um.
I mean, I just got.
So, I am concerned that as Chair of this committee, that if this gets referred, we're
gonna get dragged back to court, so that's a concern, that we should talk about in executive session to figure out what the best strategy is, so, so that's the, the main point, so thank you.
Counselor? Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I was just wondering if I could get clarity on one point, 'cause I, what I'm hearing is that the proper notice wasn't given, but I don't think, at the time I chaired this committee, I don't think that's entirely fair to the clerk or the committee. It was, it was noticed properly and then tabled, and then we don't notice for tabling.
Correct, that's my understanding, yeah.
Okay, I just wanted that clear, 'cause I, I think it's important to note that there's not, there's not, there wasn't a proper procedure that wasn't followed, but it, I think it illuminated a gap in what we could have done in terms of follow-up.
I think it sounded like it was just an inadvertence with the tabling, uh, or, or not even tabling, I think it was just inadvertently omitted from one particular agenda.
Okay, I appreciate that, thank you.
Counselor Seeker.
Thank you, Council President. And then if I remember, this was approved, but then installed without the proper permit, so that is why in December, we all unanimously voted to order to take it down. So, I just really fast want, I, I think I understood you, and you're basically saying there's no need for us to go into executive session, that this is a matter of public record, and we should either refer it to committee and have a discussion about this there, or we should, we should, um, schedule a public hearing for a couple of weeks from now, and then re-notify abutters. We had a gentleman come in here back in December who was extremely upset about this antenna being within feet of his little girl's bedroom. So we, it, it is our obligation to make sure that this gets done right regardless of, of, of anything. This is, we had a constituent come in here who was extremely upset, and we need to figure this out, and I think, unless we're gonna discuss litigation strategies, there's no And I think unless we're going to discuss litigation strategies, there's no need, and it would be a huge waste of time, to refer this to executive session. So I will be voting no to refer this to executive session this evening.
Because from what I understand, and just so that, I know Counsel Winslow was upset it was referred without his knowing. When this first came to be, let me just shut off, say, Counsel Seekers. Mr. Zaher was actually over holiday. He actually met with the court, had an idea because we didn't give proper notice to Verizon, and completely understandable, that it was probably going to go that way. And then there was no notice given back in terms of the draft from the city solicitor just over time. And that's why I immediately, because of, based on talking to Mr. Zaher as well as John McNair, was the court's going to make us go back and redo the process as efficiently as possible. So there wasn't a meeting last week, so this was put on two weeks ago with the hope to refer it and do a do-over. So that's what I was following there. And I didn't know the outcome of, you know, seeing the final documents of the lawsuit to put in executive session. So would I have done that? I don't know. But what I understand by that, so Mr. Zaher can tell me, I'm certainly not an attorney, it's either we do the process over, we just, we just forget about the fight and we grant them the license. That's it. That's all we have in front of us. And that's my understanding. Correct?
Yes, I understand the judge's order is pretty clear. You go through the process again and do it right. Whatever may have inadvertently been done, you know, wrong last time, whatever was accidentally missed, just go through the process, do it right, and then you make the decision that you make. Give everybody, all the abutters, the opportunity to have, have their say, whatever that may be. You accept it, you don't accept it, you make a final decision. You've just got to do it.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Murphy, you've been waiting.
That's okay. It's actually kind of clarified. Okay. When I was listening to you, you just explained what I thought I had heard, that there really is no choice in this matter. We've been given a directive by the judge to take action. So that's a correct statement, number one, correct? Okay. And number two, in your legal opinion, normally Ms. Fallon would be standing here in front of us, do you believe that this warrants going out of the five things that allow us to go into executive session? Do you believe that what you've explained tonight allows us to adhere to those rules and go into executive session?
Following the proper procedures, you can go into executive session whenever you want. The thing is, going into executive session does nothing to advance what the judge ordered. The judge ordered that you go through the, you can't go in, you can't have a public hearing in executive session because it's private. The judge ordered that we go through the processes which include a public hearing as expeditiously as possible. To me, that's, there's nothing in executive session that can advance compliance with the court's order. If you want to go into executive session for something else, maybe, fine. But it doesn't advance compliance with the court's order, the text of the court's order.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I guess my question here is, are we or are we not in litigation? And are we going to discuss any type of strategy? It sounds like you're saying no. And the quickest way to move this forward is to put it to a public hearing. And going into executive session would just delay it. Is that, is that correct? All right. Thank you, Mr. President.
We can hear. Can I apologize for the feedback? Counsel Winslow for the third time.
So I asked my fellow councilors, have you read the court order? Have you received a copy of the court order? I have read it. And I don't think the representation here is, is correct. This order goes to the city, not just the council. And I do point out that on December 21st or 22nd, whenever this council voted to call for this antenna to be removed, there was no process to send that to public properties. There was no process to inform the abutters. So one process is to go through that same process. So that's the thing. There is options here that we should discuss. And knowing that we have sophisticated legal counsel that is in this room tonight, I think it's fair that we should go in and discuss this. Because I, as a council chair, do not want to send public notices out and have those yanked back because this isn't in compliance. We have a plaintiff here that has sued us based on that and could very well go to court and not agree with this. I mean, I think if anything, we should direct the city solicitor to bring this back to the court to make sure this procedure is right. We have a dispute. That's litigation. So we should not be sending out notices to the public when we're not confident. I mean, we don't want to have the, then have to re-rank, yank those. That's my concern. I just don't want to yank the public around. And like I say, there are other alternatives. So, so I just will not feel comfortable having this referred. And I just don't feel I can schedule a meeting in the midst of litigation. So, thank you.
From the chair and point of information, Counsel Winslow. And the meeting in December was going to be referred to the public property meeting. And if you don't believe me, you can ask the Counsel Linnahan, who I had a conversation the day before. What happened in the meantime was Verizon, which apparently you're good friends with, wants to not get permits, Mr. Winslow. So if you're going to tell the truth, tell it with facts. Because that's the way it is. Because there was a conversation had with myself and Counsel Amanda Linnahan two days before that Tuesday. And another thing that's very important to note is, speaking to our attorney's office, it's very unprofessional, as you know, an attorney, to have the other attorney email the council directly. So apparently, there must be some legal strategy happening, Counsel Winslow. And if you don't want to take the vote, committee, I have the floor. I have the floor, Counselor. I have the floor. But you're telling, you're telling the public that there was no plan to go to committee. That is, that is 100% a lie. That is a lie.
I did not say that. I just said it didn't go to committee.
No, 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 no. You said there was no plan, Counselor. You said there was no plan. And that's the problem I have with it. There was a plan. And the reason why I asked for the council vote that night, and maybe I was wrong, was because after speaking, after speaking to Nelson Miller, he called me up and says, we may have a way not to grant it because they didn't pull the proper permit. Right, wrong, or indifferent, that's what I gave. And I guess you can have the floor, Counsel. Let me put your mic on.
I was raising these questions before Mr. Weaver. And I do agree that it was inappropriate for that thing to be, the, that, that was inappropriate for that communication to be forwarded. But it's sad that I had to receive that communication from a fellow counsel when I didn't receive it from our own city solicitor's office. I was already asking those questions. I had asked for our city solicitor's office to send that order. I didn't contact Mr. Weaver or anything like that. I had no idea that this was on, on this agenda until I was reviewing it today. I immediately reached out to you, the solicitor's office, to ask about this. I wanted to read the order specifically. I didn't even know that Verizon had filed this. I was, my question to the solicitor office is, was this something filed by the abutters who didn't get notice? Or was it filed by the petitioner? So that was all before, you know, any, if you received anything. So I was raising these issues about what was going on with this litigation. And, you know, when we get sued, we should, I think it's fair to ask. And there is some strategy here as to what we should be doing going forward with this. It's not clear to me that from the order and what Verizon requested, that the, we never revoked the underlying permit. We only asked them to move the antenna. So there's an underlying permit here that's still in place, as far as I can tell, and that any appeal period went on that. So that's, that's what I'm saying. There's, there's true things, and me as a committee chair, I don't think it's fair for the rest of the council to put a committee chair in the midst of litigation. That's, that's my concern. It's not fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I think everybody, oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Hayes, your light's blank. Counselor Hayes, you have the floor.
Thank you. So we weren't involved. I wasn't involved in this, you know, I'm hearing this all a lot for the first time. So I'm trying to take that all in, and I'm sorry that you weren't, it's hard to be kind of caught off guard. So I acknowledge that. And I do also acknowledge that this is very clear what the directive is. I get that. I get that we can move to put this to committee. I just have a question, clear cut, about litigation. If we are in litigation, are we breaking any type of rule or by talking about this in public?
The answer is no, you're not breaking any rule. Everything, everything that we're discussing is a public record, open to anybody who goes to the courthouse and, you know, looks for this file, can look at this order. All we're discussing is compliance with this, what, what if any steps the council and the cities are going to take to comply with this order. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Semee. So if I, am I understanding correctly that you have a concern that if we fail to refer this right now, that that could be viewed unfavorably by the judge?
My, my concern is the city needs to act. It needs to go through the process. It needs to hold a public hearing, give notice, proper notice, and then after the public hearing, take action with respect to this pole, this antenna on the pole. If you don't do that, you risk, you risk, you know, being found not in compliance with the court's order. So, I mean, obviously, my recommendation, no secret, is to comply with the court's order.
So can I, can I just ask, is there a way to do, because I think part of what we run up against is our docket rules, which we also don't want to violate because we've gotten in trouble for that, too. I, I hear, you know, the frustration from Counsel Winslow about being put on the spot on this and the need to talk through some potential possibilities here. Is there a way to do both, to schedule, to both vote, to schedule, to send this to property so that it can be properly docketed with the properties committee if we decide to go that vote, and then also to plan for an executive session prior to when that happens? So that we can ask our questions of the attorney?
I'm sorry. I'm trying to give you point information. So, so the process is, and the clerk is here, it would take them a couple, couple weeks, Mr. Clerk?
You have seven days to notify the abutters.
So.
So it couldn't be done, or like if you decided tonight, tomorrow wouldn't be enough to have it the following Tuesday. There's, you know, there's time, little time lapse there. It has to be seven days that notices go out to the abutters.
And the point, Mr. McDonald, was that's a conversation that, it was a strategy putting on there. I, I take full responsibility for not letting Counsel Winslow know that we put it in committee because it was just going to be referred. Because, and, and to the clerk's office, there was a discussion between their attorney and our attorney this morning. Unfortunately, our attorneys did not send out the email first. So that was, that's, we, they did it. And then immediately, they sent out an email kind of summarizing all this. The, the hope was, when I had a conversation with Counsel Winslow, was to refer it, not me, because it takes them, say, two weeks to send it out and have an executive session next week to talk strategy. That was the hope. If you want to go to executive session, that's fine. It just delays the process another two weeks. It will, will slow the process unless the council just wants to vote to give Verizon the permit. That's, is as simple as I can make it. Mr. McDonald, I'm going to give you back the mic.
I would not, I'm not making that motion. And I would just ask Counsel Winslow, like, if we're able to have an executive session conversation, obviously, we could postpone a hearing if we, if we wanted to after it gets referred. Does that, does that address your, does that address your need to postpone the conversation?
Yeah, I, I do think that, I, I do feel awkward knowing that there's some concern about the process that, that our solicitors offered, that we should, as a council, should discuss that, whether, if there's another alternative. So I think that's my concern, is that I don't want to have a situation where we send out notices and then, then be challenged in court for doing that. So I think we should discuss that and make sure that whatever process we're going through is something, like I say, reading the order, it's, it's more, more vague in terms of, like I say, and I would share an executive session, a little different point of view. But I could say, that's something that I want to reserve to executive session and not to, you know, not in a public session. There are, you know, other ways, I think, to comply with the court's order. And we should discuss that because, you know, particularly concerned that the plaintiff here is raising concern with what our solicitors propose. So I don't want to schedule a public hearing and then get the court to say that's not what they meant. So, so that's my concern.
Right. But voting to refer, voting to refer this order to public property does not, does not automatically create that hearing. You still have to schedule the hearing. And so I'm just saying, if we don't refer it tonight, right, then we have to wait until the full council is back in two weeks in order to be able to make that referral. So I'm just wondering if we could, if we could take the procedural motion of getting it off our desk to demonstrate to the judge that we are taking action, and then we'll, you know, commit to show up and have a robust discussion in executive session so that we can clarify our strategy. If we have to go back and do something else, we can do that. But then we don't get two weeks behind.
Yeah, no, like I said, I just want to make sure that we have discussion in executive session, you know, before we send those notices out. So, thank you. If that, if we want to do both tonight, that's fine with me. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to go into executive session next week, or can that simply be?
No, I, I was just, that was a point of information.
It has to be documented. Okay. Okay. Right. Got it. Okay. Thank you. I don't have any additional motion to be made, but what, in that case, what I would, what I, can I say what, I can say what my? Great. I have the floor. I think I would like to not vote, not take a vote on going into executive session, but vote to refer this and have that noted in the minute, in the minutes of this council meeting, that we are going to executive session to discuss the strategy and then have that docketed for next week. Great. I'm good. Thank you.
Hopefully for the last time. Yeah, I don't, I don't know what it is either. A lot of discussion on a telephone poll. I would suggest for the new councilors here that you find the ordinance on this particular topic. There was a tremendous amount of work done. It seemed to work very smoothly last year under chairmanship of Counsel Linnahan, where we got through a number of these poll sites. This seems to have been a little bit of an aberration, where as it was stated, because of the tabling motion, the residents on Willard Street, half of which belongs to Ward 5, okay, were not advised, were not really able, did not, were not able to attend the public hearing or did not attend the public hearing. So, you know, to me, it's, it's kind of simple and cut and dried. Had this process gone appropriately, that particular antenna might not be in that spot. It might be in a different spot. But I, not a lawyer, so I don't want to say that Counsel Winslow does not have something that, you know, needs to be addressed in executive session. But I do think that this is kind of a very cut and dried situation that we've gone through for the past year with multiple other telephone poles and multiple other antennas. And I am not a favor, for those of you who are just joining here, of these antennas at all. As I've said for three years, I call them skyline litter. I think they're going to, you know, just kind of start to reproduce like rabbits throughout the city. Our residents don't want them near their homes. They don't want them near their children. They don't want them near their bedrooms. But we do have an ordinance that we But we do have an ordinance that we have to follow. So, you know, it is, it is a very touchy situation. I would not want one in front of my house, I would not want one near my children's bedroom. I know that Mr. Weaver has presented and his fellow Verizon folks have presented data to us that, you know, the radiation is nothing that's serious, but we are, you know, getting a proliferation of these in the city and it is a problem. But we do have an ordinance that we do need to follow. It is our city law, we do need, like anything else, to evaluate the situation, make a decision and move forward. You know, I, I personally don't see the need to go into executive session. I'm not going to disagree with the whole committee, certainly will sit through it if we do need to go through it. But I do listen to, you know, our, our attorney here, who is basically stating that, you know, there is an order from the, the court that says we need to proceed and, and move this forward. I personally would prefer just to get it over with, have the public hearing. But I do think that Counselor McDonald's suggestion, so that we don't delay it, is something that I can live with. We will make a motion to refer this to public property and then if it so passes to have the executive session, I guess you're saying we don't have to vote on it, we can just, we can just schedule it. We could probably get that done within a two-week period, which hopefully will make everybody happy. And we'll come to a resolution one way or the other, favorably or unfavorably, Mr. Weaver. But, you know, we, we did, and I'm sure you were here the night that, or heard about the night that the resident did speak very eloquently about their concerns. I doubt my place to, Mr. Weaver is looking like he wants to speak, so.
Thank you, I just wanted to sort of clarify what voted, so if Counselor. There's a motion on the floor, right, to refer this to executive session. No, no, there, the only motion on the floor right now is to refer this to executive session. And, and seconded, so, so if Counselor McDonald, I would make the motion to refer to public properties and we docket executive session for next week. So, you know, then it'd be sort of the vote to no, to refer this to executive session and just docket it properly next week, but then in two weeks or whenever it is have the, would be, be sending it to public properties? Or I think a city solicitor suggested that we do it in two weeks at the full council?
I think that, that's, so, so Counselor, and this is a conversation I had a couple times today. So, I think the, that, that, what we're trying to do here is, first of all, again, I'm not going to speak from the lawyer's perspective, but go along with the court's decision to make this efficient, right? The second part of this is understanding there might want to be some discussions happening executive session and the clerk needs time. So, just because, like Counselor McDonald said, just because it's being referred, it might be three weeks from now, it might be four weeks, depending on what comes out of the executive session. But the point is, it's already inside the, the committee and then we can determine, because we do want to give enough time for the clerk to, to do, that's the whole point of my passion here, is the residents, no fault of anybody's, just weren't properly notified. And I'm working on, trying to correct that fix, or Counselor Linehan knows, we, we discussed it last year, I've been, I've been working with the past clerk to fix this. It's, it's many spots in our ordinance that has notification, right? But just because it's being referred, I don't, I don't anticipate, nor what I want, to schedule a meeting if all the answers weren't properly before us and then schedule the public meeting and then take the vote, just like we would do in any public property, and then it comes back to the full council for a final vote. So, the public property would take their own public hearing, they would, they would hear the, the, the residents, they would hear the petitioner, and then they would make a decision like any other committee and then it comes back to the full council to make another vote. That's the process. So, I don't have a timetable in mind, but I just wanted to get it in committee based on what we thought was coming down from Z here from the courts until we get the final documentation, which we've only received, you know, about, I don't know, I don't know how well, to be quite honest. So, that, that's where it stands. Counselor Crowe. Let me put your microphone on, so Counselor, so Counselor Crowe has made a motion to refer to public properties. Do I have a second? By Counselor Sika. All right, so we have a couple, we have a, wait, there's another Counselor Semenelli. Discussion that motion, Counselor Crowe? Okay, good, Counselor Semenelli, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to know from the city solicitor, is there a timeframe? I know you said that there's a, there's an order from the court, but is there, is there a timeframe?
There's no exact timeframe that says, you know, 10 days, 30 days or anything like that, but as expeditiously as possible, depending on what the city normally does when it acts, you know, schedules meetings and acts on them. So, I mean, no, there's no number of days set.
I see no more lights and for whatever it's worth, there's a lot of passion up here in the council with the 5G. I think everybody here wants to do the same thing, is just, you know, give benefit to the petitioner and certainly our residents, and that was the passion, just to have the ability to, to do, do over and listen to all the testimony. So, I appreciate it, I know sometimes we get testy, certainly me, but at the end of the day, you know, we'll try to just make sure the residents of the community have their say like anybody else. So, I wanted to take, Counselor Winslow has a motion seconded by Counselor Semenelli, is that still the case? To send it to, 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 um. Hold on, Mr., Mr., Counselor Winslow, hold on, I'm going to put it on so you can, make sure everybody can hear you. There you go.
No, I, I'm supportive of merging them so we can have, have that, you know, both referred and next week have executive session, I'm supportive of that, thank you. Can we, can I can make that or what? So, yeah, I don't, I don't know why we can't refer it to both, so.
Yeah, I mean, we can refer it, there's, I mean, well, we're, with the clerks right here, we're on camera, the public will make sure something is scheduled for next week, if we, next week, so. So, executive session, yeah, oh, yeah, we don't, we don't have, again, we don't have a date for the pub, that's, that's not even in, in the purview right now. So, if I understand correctly, we're not going to take up that vote, we're going to merge them. So, Counselor, and if I say it wrong, please correct. Well, we're going to make sure that we're going to put inside the order, we're going to say we're going to have an executive session meeting next week, that's. Okay, so we'll separate them. So, let's do this executive session. On Counselor Winslow's motion to go into executive session, or refer this to executive session, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes.
Oh, hold on, no problem, no, no, hold on, let me put your light, hold on, I'm controlling, hold on, there you go.
Okay, now that you just changed that, I want to be sure I'm, I'm voting for the right thing. So, we are now voting to go into executive session, but not tonight to be put. So, this means we're voting to go into executive session that will be scheduled next week? Okay, yes.
Condon.
Condon said yes.
Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Semenelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Motion carries executive session, nine, nine to two, clerk? Okay, next order of business, on Counselor Crowe's motion, seconded by, who's seconded then? Clerk will call the roll. This is, this is, hold on, let me be clear. This is to refer this paper to public property. Mike, this is to refer the paper to public property with no date in mind, just to get it into our committee? But the way the rules work here is in order for us to have a public hearing, we.
I think you should have a meeting next Tuesday.
I can't, I don't have proper notice.
No, a committee meeting.
We don't have proper notice for the public.
The, the notices wouldn't get out.
Not, not a public hearing, but it, it's getting referred to committee, the committee should meet next Tuesday.
But there's not a meeting under the public property, you need, you need the public hearing for it. There's a public hearing as part of that process, that's why, Counselor Sika, yeah, so.
So, this is just the paper for the judge?
This is just, this is just to get the paper, this is, this is, this is to get the paper and committee. Well, what would, well, and I'm not going to speak for our, I mean, once it gets to committee, we, we would have it, we would have some, it would be, I think, some reasonable expectation that we have to meet within a certain reasonable timeframe. We just can't let it sit there because that would, that would.
So, this is going to be at least a month of what we.
I hope not, Counsel, hold on one second, Counselor Sika, you outside? Okay, keep going.
So, this is, this could be a month because you're talking, next week, we're going to go to executive session, the following, which do we, then we, needs to go into committee the following week and then committee decides to have a public hearing. That can't happen seven days from that because it's a Tuesday. So, you're looking at a good month, is that acceptable? Is that expeditiously? Because I don't, when he says expeditiously, I don't think that sounds expediti. I, I'm not looking to beat this dead horse, but for us to just put this on paper so the judge thinks we did something, I think executive session is a waste of time. The city solicitor sat up here and told us that we should do one of the two. Now, we're still going into executive session when we don't need to go in executive session because as far as I'm concerned, we just discussed everything out here, except for litigation strategies.
Yeah, so, so my hope is we come out of next week's meeting with an understanding what expectations are. Hopefully, it is to have a meeting. The CHIA can then schedule a meeting at his, his discretion, which could be, he could leave that meeting Tuesday, next Tuesday and say to the clerk, send out the hearing for two weeks, we're going to have, we're going to have a meeting. Hold on one second, the clerk has some information.
I have, I do have some good news, is that normally lately what the, what these small cells have done was given us 20 locations at a time, so it was probably 3,000 letters we had to mail out. This is only one location. So, is, we can get the abudis list from the assessors' office. This, the turnaround time as far as us mailing out the letters will be fairly quick.
Yeah, and, and myself and the clerk had a call, was it last week I came in, last Tuesday? Last Tuesday, myself and the clerk had a discussion saying, if this gets referred, be ready to get those letters out so we can do it in a, in a timely fashion. So, it might not be a month, Counselor, but, but this was the end game anyways, to get it into committee, the, the kind of the, I don't want to say the pit stop would be just with next week's executive session, so. Where were we? Okay, uh, excuse me, Counselor McDonald, you have your hand up, do you want to speak? The huss is dead, the huss is dead. All right, so on Counselor Crowe's motion to refer to the public hearing, public property commission, uh, committee, seconded by Counselor Sika, the clerk will please call the roll.
Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Semenelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes, it has been referred unanimously to public properties. Thank you very much. Mr. Z, thank you for your information, I appreciate it. Next order of business.
Paper 79-22, be here by ordained by the Marlin City Council at section 4.24.050, 4.24.070, 4.24.080, 4.24.110, 4.24.1.120 and 4.24.180 of the Delay Before Demolition or Alteration Ordinance of Title 424, Code of the City of Marlin, Chapter 4 of the City Revised Ordinance of 2020, be amended as follows, and I do have a letter from the mayor.
Want to read the re, the letter into the record?
I do. Dear members of the City Council, I rate to ask your consideration in amending the Delay Before Demolition or Alteration Ordinance found in Title 4.24, Code of the City of Marlin, Chapter 4 of the City's Revised Ordinance of 2020. The amendment served to facilitate the administration of the ordinance, reflect current city protocols while also incorporating recommendations of the State Historical Commission. Since the ordinance was adopted in 2018, Marlin's Historical Commission has reviewed dozens of petitions that trigger the application of this ordinance. As, as a result, the commission has had the opportunity to administrate, administer the provisions and requirements firsthand. Based on this experience, they've come to realize which sections of the ordinance needs updating and/or more clarification. Working with our city planner, Michelle Romero, and building commissioner, Nelson Miller, we have come up with the attached amendments that address the concerns of the Historical Commission. The revisions in. The revisions include stated criteria for clarification purposes, new time periods that reflect current protocol and the, and the establishment of fees and fines. In addition, the new provisions codify the current processes being followed by the commission and petitioners when working together during delay periods. Again, I would ask that you consider these proposed amendments. In the meantime, please let me know if you have any additional information. Thank you for your consideration, sincerely Gary Christiansen, Mayor of Marlin.
No, just going to refer to ordinance.
My mic on, I don't know what the backfeed is, though, in Counselor Crowe's motion to refer to ordinance, seconded by Counselor Colin Hayes, clerk will call the roll. Oh, I'm sorry, all, we don't need a roll call, bad habits. On Counselor Crowe's motion to refer to ordinance, seconded by Counselor Karen Hayes, all in favor? All opposed? Motion carries, referred to ordinance. Next order of business.
Order that the city designate the Marlin Moose Hall, 5562 Broadway as the polling location for Ward 6, Precinct 3.
Uh, wait, hold on, where am I? Yep, on Counselor Crowe's motion to refer the paper to the rules and ordinance? Where am I, where am I, right here, right? I just want the record to show that it's written wrong in my paper, okay? Counselor Winslow for the paper, sorry, Counselor Winslow.
Yeah, as, as you know, we've gone through the redistricting process and there's, one of the things as we, we worked through the redistricting process, um, uh, there's a good, kind of a triangle up Broadway, you know, west of Broadway that, up by Luma Street, that was originally Ward 8 and that now has shifted into Ward 6 because of the redistricting. And so, and because of the need, the current polling places, 630 Salem Street and Club 24 in Ward 6 are not big enough to have a doubling of precincts, we, we need to have another polling place. So, it makes sense with those changes to the ward lines and the, for the convenience of people in Maplewood Highlands and the Luma Street area, that it would make sense to have the Moose Lodge be the third polling place in Ward 6, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Winslow, there was some attachments, if everybody saw them, get the opportunity. I think accessibility is certainly an area everybody's concerned up here. I apologize for the mishap, it is an order, so we, we just take a, a vote. So, all in favor of designating the Moose Main Hall at 5? You want a roll call? Okay, Counselor, Counselor, on Counselor Winslow's motion to hereby designate the Marlin Moose Main Hall, 562 Broadway as the polling location for Ward 6, Precinct 3. Oh, I need a second, I do need a second. Counselor Simma, Counselor Semenelli for a second. So, on Counselor Winslow's motion, seconded by Counselor Semenelli, clerk will call the roll.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Semenelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes, motion carries. Next order of business.
Order that the City Council hereby designate the following locations as polling places for the 2022 state election.
Okay, this is again similar to the last one, this is really not a debate. Uh, it is not really something we can change and if it is, it's too late at this point. So, there are some 27 locations now because of the redistricting in the precincts. So, any questions or comments? Okay, on Counselor Sika's motion to designate the following, do you want to read them out or do we have to? You got that list?
I can't, I read everything else here.
Yeah, I can read it, go ahead, give it a break so you get it right. So, let's put it in the public record, so we're going to, I'll read out all the locations so everybody understands. So, in Ward 1, Precinct 1 is Ferryway, it's also the same for Ward 1, Precinct 2, also the same for Ward 1, Precinct 3. For Ward 2, Precinct 1, it's the, it's the community room at 89 Pearl Street. For Ward 2 in Precinct 2 and Ward 2 in Precinct 3, it is the Irish American, so they're both the same, which is at 177 West Street, same as, you know, similar to everybody else. For Ward 3, there are four precincts, there's 1, 1A, 2, and 3. The good news there, it's all BB, uh, high school, BB Junior High, it says BB School, at 41 Pleasant Street, so no change for Ward 3. On Ward 4, there are also three precincts now, same locations, it's. It's, uh, Ward Four, Precinct One is the Early Learning Center. Ward Two is the Senior Center Auditorium. Ward Four Three is also the Early Learning Center. Same locations. Ward Five, there are four precincts now. So Five One is the Salem Wood. Five Two is now the Forest, well, it always was the Forestdale, Forestdale. Um, Five Three is the Forestdale, and Five Three A is also the Forestdale. What happens inside the school, there are designated areas, there's left, right, and middle when you go in there. I'm, I'm assuming they will be properly marked, uh, but good, good, good for those residents.
Several languages.
Several languages as well, too, from clerk. And I do see our other clerk in the back room, in the back of the room. So Ward Six, there are three polling locations. Six One is the six thirty community room, six Two is the, the Club Twenty-four Members Room, and this year, which we just voted on, is gonna be six Three, the Malden Moose, the Main Hall. For Ward Seven, uh, is gonna be Seven One, is gonna be the Ferryway School. Uh, for Ward Seven Two is the Salem Wood School. Ward Seven Three is gonna be Suffolk Manor, and Seven Three A is Suffolk Manor. I know this is something myself and Counselor Simonelli were looking at maps last Tuesday here, uh, he had his concerns, so, um, we wanted to make sure that there was no changes for his ward as least impactful as possible, like all the other councils. And finally, uh, Ward Eight, there are three precincts, good news, Precinct One, Precinct Two, Precinct Three are all at Linden. So that is it. So on Counselor Seeca's motion, seconded by Counselor Winslow, all in favor? All opposed? Those polling locations are granted. Next order of business.
Paper seventy-six dash twenty-two, order that the sum of thirty-seven thousand two hundred twenty-seven dollars and twenty-six cents be transferred from salary reserved for reclassifications, account zero zero one zero nine nine six five one two zero into the following accounts. Teen center salaries, eight thousand eight hundred and one dollars and seventy-seven cents. Police administration salaries, three thousand eight hundred and thirty-one dollars and seventy-four cents. Information technology salaries, four thousand thirty-four dollars and thirty-three cents. Controller salaries, two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-one cents. DPW administrative salaries, one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Fire administrative salaries, two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Health and human service salaries, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Recreation salaries, two thousand eight hundred and ninety-three dollars and ninety-seven cents. Engineering salaries, two thousand three hundred and forty-three dollars and forty-one cents. Inspection service salaries, one thousand five hundred and seventy-one dollars. Traffic administrative salaries, five thousand three hundred and nineteen dollars and twenty-five cents.
On Counsel Murphy's motion to refer. Hold on, Counsel, let me turn it on for you, I'm just gonna shut mine off, give me one second.
Counsel Murphy, your mic's on.
Yes, I'd like to refer this to finance, but I just would like to, um, give the council a little insight into what this is. Um, if, for those of you who have been on the council, you'll remember that each budget cycle for the last three years, I've requested that we put an, a significant amount of money, fifty thousand dollars, into the budget in order for us to work on reclassifying some of the jobs within the City of Malden. Um, this year, Maria Louise, Anthony Ciccarelli, our HR director, and myself have spent many hours, um, working with the department heads to come up with, um, certain jobs that do need to be classified. This is a first cut, um, it does not solve all of the problems of this city. Um, I'm looking forward to putting another fifty thousand in the budget for next year so we can continue this process. Um, but I would like to refer this to finance so that we can discuss it in more detail. Um, but that really is what the gist of this is, and one of the things I think you're very proud of is the fact that it really does span, you know, a good number of the departments in this city. So I think, um, you'll find that this will make many of our employees very happy and happy to know that, um, this is not just a one-time effort, but it's gonna be an ongoing effort to look at those jobs that do need to be reclassified.
Okay, any questions? Counsel, Counsel Condon, so on Counsel-
My mic on, somebody hears me, on Counsel Murphy's motion, seconded by Counsel Condon, to refer to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Items are referred to finance, next order of business.
Paper sixty, sixty-three dash twenty-two, resolve that the traffic commission conduct a feasibility study on installing traffic lights at Franklin Street and Eastern Ave.
On Counselor, you want to speak on the council? Okay, on Counsel Simonelli's mo- motion to pass to resolve, all in favor? All opposed? Resolve is passed. Next order of business.
Paper sixty-four dash twenty-two, resolve that the traffic commission install no parking sign from one ten Rich Street to one oh two Rich Street.
Counsel Simonelli for the paper. On Counsel somebody's motion to pass to resolve, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item's passed. Next order of business.
Paper sixty-five dash twenty-two, resolve that the representatives of the City Clerk's Office and the Board of Registrar of Voters appear before the City Council to discuss continuing efforts to make elections more accessible to Chinese-speaking voters.
Counsel Winslow for the paper, just give me one second, Counsel Winslow. Give me one second. There you go, Counsel Winslow.
Um, I, I know the City Clerk and the, uh, Board of Registration of Voters have made great progress in terms of, um, you know, complying with requirements, uh, as a, a community with a lot of Chinese-speaking voters to make sure that, um, we are in compliance. But I, I know that there's some more efforts, um, going on, so I thought we should, as a council, just get an update on that. I, I don't know if Carol Anne is here tonight to do that, but, um, certainly willing to have, uh, you know, be, someone come back, um, you know, at a coming meeting, um, council whole or something like that to, to just bring up there are ongoing committees and, um, it, like I say, some of it is to understand what progress we've made and what more we can do to make things better, and I, I think that's always valuable, so, so that's just the purpose of the resolution.
So I don't want to put Carol Anne on the spot, Counsel, uh, Winslow, I asked the clerk, and the clerk said they just would like to have more time for a proper presentation.
Sure, yeah.
So to make sure that Counselor, I could see Carol Anne sweating back there.
That's so good.
Not that you're probably not prepared, Carol Anne, but just give you a little more time.
Yeah, that's fine.
Sure she is. So on Counselor, uh, Winslow's motion, uh, to pass to resolve and have the Clerk's Committee, the Clerk Office, excuse me, come back and give an update on efforts to make elections more accessible to Chinese-American, Chinese-
Sorry. Speaking.
Chinese-speaking voters. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Resolve passes. Next order of business.
Under Communications Planning Board, Paper Four Fifty-two dash twenty-one, order be hereby ordained that the revised ordinances of two thousand twenty, Section twelve point two eight point zero sixty, Obstructions, be amended as followed, which there was attachment to this. In Paper Four Oh Five dash twenty, twenty-one, order be hereby ordained that Section Twelve of the Revised Ordinance of two thousand twenty, effective one one two thousand twenty, be amended by adding Section twelve point twelve point three hundred, Site Plan Review.
Counsel Winslow, you have your mic, you have your light on.
Oh, well, I could talk about it, but I, I think this is Counsel Crowe, are we gonna talk?
You sure? Okay, so on Counselor Crowe's motion to refer back to ordinance. So before we do that, just for the new councils to understand the process here with, with ordinance. So ordinance is, it goes to the ordinance committee. Uh, some of our, our zoning ordinances have to be referred to a public hearing process, which is the joint hearing between the planning board and us, and then it comes back with a recommendation, and then we formulate the ordinance from there. So it's kind of a three-step process, not efficient is the word we're using today, but certainly understandable. So on Counselor Crowe's motion to refer the, the communication to the Rules and Ordinance Committee, all in favor? Oh, let me get it, let me get it second. Counselor, uh, Linehan is, is seconded that. So on Counselor, uh, Crowe's motion, seconded by Counsel Linehan, uh, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Item is referred. Next order of business.
Under Committee Reports, Committee Report Finance, Paper Three Seventy, Thirty-seven dash twenty-two, order that the appropriation enumerated below, being the amount of five thousand dollars, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund to the following project, Crescent Slope Restoration Enhancement, five thousand dollars from the general fund.
Counselor- On Counsel Murphy's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Favor, favor has, the committee report is received, Counsel Murphy for the committee. Give me one second, Counselor, because these mics are awful tonight.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, the next four papers basically are all papers that have to do, um, with the Community Preservation Committee and grant applications that have been passed favorably through the committee. Mr. Coughlin is here, has been patiently waiting, he's here if we need to have him answer any questions for us. We had, um, a rather lively debate last week on the Finance Committee on all four of these papers. They were all passed out favorably out of the Finance Committee. Um, as we go through them, we certainly will be looking for your support, but we're happy to answer any questions that you have. Um, this first one is the smallest of the four that we're going to deal with. It has to do with a number of residents who came together and wanted to create a trio head. I believe Counsel Winslow, it's in Ward Six. Uh, Counsel Winslow has, um, been working with the residents. They also have done a cleanup on this particular property. They are going to do a lot of sweat equity to actually get this trio in place. Um, the five thousand dollars is basically, uh, for them to be able to, um, do some survey work. And, um, you know, the actual improvements to the site for my, and maybe at the cost of a bench, but the actual improvements to the site would be more sweat equity. I don't know if Counsel Winslow or Mr. Coughlin, if you have anything to add to that. Otherwise, I just ask for a motion to pass the five thousand dollars.
Okay, any discussion for, let me, my mic's on, I do see a couple lights on.
So I have Counsel O'Malley first, Counsel O'Malley?
Super, super in favor, I, I was just wondering if maybe we wanted to do all of them together, um, but I'll defer to you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Counsel Murphy?
We, we could, I think we could do them one at a time, just in case there's any questions. Um, that's why I wanted to kind of give the overview for all, all four of them.
I'm sorry.
I know.
All right. So Counsel Murphy?
Motion to approve the five thousand dollars.
Hold on, Counsel Winslow has his hand up.
Oh, sorry.
I'm just trying to, hold on one second. You want a second, Counsel Winslow?
Counsel, I apologize, let me shut off Counsel Murphy's mic. There's a lot of buttons happening up here, ladies and gentlemen. So on Counsel Murphy's motion to pass, Paper Three Seven dash two-two, is that correct? Seconded by Counsel Winslow, all in favor? All opposed? Paper passes. So Counsel Murphy, you, you want to do these separate? Hold on. Yeah, we can receive them all together. You want to receive them all together, we can vote individually, okay? So give me one second, I'm gonna, I'm gonna just read it so we do it, and then the clerk will read all the papers, so you have them, and then we can vote individually, okay? On Counsel's motion, on Counsel Murphy's motion to receive the committee report, which is gonna be committee report, clerk, if you want to read them into the record, please.
The committee report sixty-eight twenty-two, uh, sixty-nine twenty-two, seventy twenty-two, and seventy-one twenty-two.
Try it now.
There's four committee reports. Who said that? On Counsel, on Counsel Murphy's motion to receive the, the four committee reports, seconded by Counsel O'Malley, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Counsel, Counsel Murphy has all the committee reports. Counsel Murphy, you want to do paper, the next one, the paper sixty, thirty-eight twenty-two?
Yes.
Yes, please. If the clerk would read. Sixty-eight twenty-two, please.
Paper thirty-eight twenty-two, that the appropriation enumerated below, being in the amount of seven hundred thousand dollars, be appropriated from the Community Preservation Fund for the following project, the Deva Park Revitalization, Revitalization Project, seven hundred thousand dollars coming from the general fund.
Thank you. If anyone wants to vote against this, they're going to have to write a letter, um, to Ms. Penelope DeVitz, uh, explaining why she's not gonna have a talk lot when she can use a new slide, so. Anyway, I, I, I'm not gonna belabor this, it's been a long night. Um, we did hear, I think, very eloquently from Ms. DeVitz, um, explaining the process that Ward Two went through, um, and the funding associated that they have been, um, successful in gathering to move this project forward. I know Counsel Condon, um, has been very active in this, and I don't want to not give him the time to say anything if he'd like, but I, if he doesn't want to say anything, I'll make a motion to approve this.
Yeah, of course, we're gonna say something, we've never seen a mic this loud. Hold on one second.
Counsel Murphy, he's gonna second it, but Counsel Condon, you have the floor.
Thank you. I'd like to, uh, make sure Mr. DeVitz gets note, notice for the great work she did during the committee. Uh, the whole committee, Shadley, Debbie Burke, uh, worked very hard, and I think once the project's done, you'll be very proud. And it's a long time overdue, uh, and it's probably the most used park in this community. It's not a neighborhood park, it's really a city park, because they come from everywhere to play down there. So, uh, I would appreciate your support. Thank you.
Same park that also has the, uh, I believe, the Lucy Basketball Courts, is that correct? The Lucy? It's only, just one day. So on Counsel Murphy's motion to approve the seven hundred thousand dollars, Paper Number Three Eight dash twenty-two, seconded, seconded by Counsel Condon, clerk will call the roll. Financial.
Cologne Hayes. Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seeca.
Yes.
Simonelli.
Winslow. Winslow, yes.
Spatafora. I do want to go back, I was informed, I did make a little bit of a mental error there. Financial papers we do a roll call on, so I want to go back for the five thousand dollar one, Counsel, just in case there's an issue, Counsel Murphy. Those are financial papers, we have to do a roll call, we just can't do all yays or nays. So let's just go back to Paper, uh, Thirty-seven dash twenty-two for the five thousand, which I believe was Counselor, uh, Murphy's motion, seconded by Counsel Winslow, clerk will call the roll. I know I caught you off guard. Counsel Condon reminded me, so.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Condon.
Yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seeca.
Yes.
Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Carries again, unanimous. Next order of business.
Paper Thirty-nine dash twenty-two, Finance Paper, that the appropriation enumerated below in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated for the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, the Malden River Works Project, two hundred thousand dollars from open space.
Counsel Murphy for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this is a project that's near and dear to my heart, being on the Malden River Works Steering Committee. Um, this project, for those of you listening for the first time, is a very unique project, is basically redesigning the DPW site to create, uh, a park in back of it that will be accessible to the general public, um, and also allow access to the waterfront, the Malden River, many people don't know exists. It also is a park that is being designed to be climate resilient. It has bioswills, um, and it is just going to be an exceptional project that hopefully will be the precursor of what other building sites along the river could look like should the owners want to continue to participate and create, you know, an, an environment that will protect not only their properties, but the city as a whole, as, you know, we work through the global warming that, that's coming for everyone. Um, this particular project has also, like Deva Park, received funding from a number of, number of other sources. Uh, we've received two municipal vulnerability grants, um, and both of which were a couple hundred thousand. We've also received a very prestigious Leventhal Grant, which was a grant from MIT. Uh, we were actually, um, awarded, uh, one of the first United States groups that was awarded money from the Leventhal Grant because of the work that we're doing. Most of the money, um, that they award seems to go overseas, so we were very proud of the effort that went into that. So this, uh, two hundred thousand dollars will help us complete, um, the design plan uh, so that we can move on to the next phase and start to secure the funding for that. So I would, um, ask that you look on this favorably and, uh, vote this money out for us. So I make a motion to approve this.
Okay, second, uh, Counsel Crowe, is that you like? Okay, so no questions? Okay, so Counsel Murphy's motion, uh, to grant, a pass, seconded by Counsel Crowe, clerk will call.
Cologne Hayes.
Yes.
Crowe, uh, Condon.
Condon, yes.
Crowe.
Yes.
Linehan.
Yes.
McDonald.
Yes.
Murphy.
Murphy, yes.
O'Malley.
Yes.
Seeca.
Yes.
Simonelli. Winslow.
Winslow, yes.
Spatafora.
Spatafora, yes. Next order of business.
Is Finance Paper Forty-one dash twenty-two, that the appropriation enumerated below in the amount of two hundred thousand dollars be appropriated from the Community Preservation Act Fund for the following project, the Linden Ice Hockey Rink, two hundred thousand dollars from open space.
Counsel Murphy for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President, once again, I think I'm gonna have the floor for quite a while tonight. Um, once again, uh, Mr. Cochran, uh, presented this project, uh, before us, Mr. Coughlin. Mr. Coff, once again, Mr. Coff, I don't want to ignore you. I, I can see you out there, so if there's anything you want to add, feel free to raise, raise your hand at any time. Um, Mr. Cochran, um, who is a sponsor of this project, was here before the Finance Committee um last week and uh went over the entire project. I, for one, am very excited about it. My husband used to skate on Linden Rink with um skates, as he said, he used to have to put three pairs of socks in, because they were too big for him, but he learned to skate down there, um, is very excited about bringing this type of an element to our city. I think it, you know, really shows um the ingenuity and inventiveness of what we all as councilors and um constituents are doing, whether it's, you know, bioswills and climate resilient parks, whether it's splash pads, you know, at different parks, ice skating rinks. Um, you were really, really bringing a lot of different elements to the city of Malden that will give all of our constituents opportunities, you know, to experience different things. I know this is in Counselor Sika's ward, and she's been working very closely, like Council Winslow and Council Condon, um, with the, uh, the folks who are working on this project. So, if she would like to say anything, certainly be the time to.
Counselor Sika.
Thank you, Counselor Murphy. Um, I just want to correct the city clerk. You said it was a ice hockey rink. It's an ice rink. I think a lot of people are getting very confused, because it is a street hockey rink, that it's going to be an ice hockey rink. And although they're one in the same, a lot of people and chatter on social media these days is making it seem like we are building a hockey rink. When I started this in 2016, my vision was an outdoor skating rink for the residents of Malden. That, the feasibility study, things like that, you know, the language that gets lost in it, nothing is in stone. This is just the money for us to go out and to, to do the design work. We're gonna have some more public meetings. We've already had two, I think, with the CPC. One in uh August of 2020, and then again, we had one, um, I think it was, hold on, I got it, December 2021. And everybody was in favor. We've had numerous people support this project. We've had nobody in opposition. I think that something like this, especially during COVID, where everybody and all their families are looking for outside activities, this is exactly what we're looking for. Somebody's gonna be able to go. It's gonna be open to the public as much as it possibly can. Um, and I think that it would, it's going to end up being a huge community asset to the city, and I look forward to it finally coming to fruition. So, thank you, and I second your motion.
Some lights here?
Uh, thank you. Um, I was wondering if we could have someone, um, maybe if you or if um Counselor Sika wants to talk about the three conditions from the CPC, because I think that's where the questions from the um community were coming um from, and so it'd be helpful to hear about the public meeting, and, and I think it'll answer the questions that are coming out from the um, from the public and the community. Thank you. I think, I'm sorry, I forgot your name. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Cochran, correct? Coff, I'm sorry. Mr. Coff, you, if you could just speak in the mic and give your name.
Sure. My name is Daniel Coff. I'm the Community Preservation Coordinator from, Coordinator for Malden, and I live at 53 Glenn Street in Malden. Uh, thank you, Council, for your consideration of this, these appropriations for these exciting open space projects. The CPC uh accepts projects for open space, affordable housing, and historic preservation. This year, we received only open space projects. Uh, so I thank you for considering allocating upwards of uh $1.1 million towards open space projects that will benefit the residents of Malden. In all projects that are in the design phase, that the CPC uh moves forward, we put the conditions that the project must engage the community and have three community meetings. Uh, the CPC also holds a public hearing on all projects, um, and as a practice, but the CPC itself does not want to be the arbiter of what the community wants necessarily. So, although um the CPC is happy to um provide funding for the design phase, we expect that during the design phase, the um applicants will be engaging the community in at least three meetings. Um, the other conditions include our, are, revolve around outreach and engagement with the community. So, um, we also require that notice be provided in multiple languages, and the CPC be notified of any community meetings, so we can promote them on our Facebook page. Additionally, for the Linden Rink, um, because that project is adjacent to a school, we um, and the conversion of the rink from a street hockey to ice may include additional um impacts in the communities, such as traffic and noise. We did require that the applicant make um special outreach to the school community and to abutters within 200 feet. So, those are the conditions that the CPC placed uh on this funding, and um we hope that you will accept it. Thank you.
Stay there. We might have some questions, Mr. Coff. Great job, by the way.
Thank you.
Council Condon, you all set?
Yes, I just um wanted to make sure that people watching, um, if they're still up, heard that, that is definitely going to be looked at and taken care of, so they can feel a little more at ease. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Sika.
Thank you, Counselor, Council President, and thank you for coming and explaining those conditions. Um, I am very well aware of them. If anybody had reached out to me and asked me about those specifically, instead of just going back and forth on social media these days, then I would have told them that, once we received the design, we would be having public meetings. There's, there's no um, there's no need for us to have public meetings and public input if we don't have a design or some sort of work to show them. So, those are all coming. They'll be here by the fall. Hopefully, if everything gets going and this gets passed this evening, that um, you know, we can, we can move forward with that. I, I would hate to see people's dislike of me as a reason. Do you not like me, Counselor Spatafora? Again, I would hate to see people's dislike of me as a reason that our residents and our children of Malden um do not get to benefit from a project like this. I think it's amazing. I've, I used to be the president of the PTO at the Linden, and when I was going to freeze it in 2016, we had the fight department come and flood it with a, a liner, and everyone was super excited about it. Um, I think people are worried about it. It's not going to be a hockey rink the entire time. In the spring and summer months, in the fall months, it's still going to be a street hockey rink. It may be frozen from the end of November to the beginning of March, and the majority of that time, the children aren't gonna be outside for outdoor recess anyway. So, the rink is not being utilized due to the weather conditions. So, I would hate to see that this be the reason that it doesn't get approved. And so, I ask for all of my colleagues' support in approving this, so we can be one of the first cities around to have an outdoor community skating rink. Thank you.
Sure, yeah, I just have one more uh point of clarification. Uh, in the recommendation letter, there's also listed as a time, a draft timeline for the project that includes the uh community meetings, and I worked with the applicant, Ron Cochran, on that, and so we discussed having, spacing out the community input, so it would happen at project kickoff, and then the community would provide input on the preliminary design, and then at the final design. So, the community should ideally have input at multiple stages of the design phase.
I don't have any questions. I was just gonna address Counselor Sika's uh statement. Um, I like you personally, and I know that we've had some disagreements over the past couple of years, but um I vote based on the merits of the project. I've supported the project since the beginning, and I look forward to continuing to support it, uh, and it would never have to do with whether or not we are getting along at a particular moment. I, I don't think that's how any of us really should be voting, so I look forward to voting and supporting this and seeing a, a future project at Linden. Thanks.
Any questions from Mr. Coff? Hold on, Counselor.
I'd just like to say, uh, our dealings with you, the Deva Park Committee, you're very professional, and the CPC is very lucky to have you, and they do a great job also. So, we thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. And if you stick around, you know, Council Murphy got that committee. We go around and look at everybody's salaries. You might want to get on that list next year, right? You just, you just, you just got a, you just got a good referral. Oh, great work. And, and before we take the vote, just, I second that, Council Condon, you know, a bunch of councils here, well, all the councils actually are, all involved in what seems to be multiple projects around our parks. Uh, we're investing the money and time and resources there, and a lot of that is made possible, because the hard work of the Community Preservation Committee that only, only stops, we're starting to see the fruits of the labor. Uh, I know it's been around for a couple of years, but now we're not, we're starting to see, I know, uh, Wallace Park, which is Beebe Hill, that's been approved, that's hopefully starting in the spring. There's several parks going on Deva today. We got Patchill, we got the Felsmere, we have Linden, so I think for the general public, this is where that additional tax dollars going into upgrading. At this point, like you said, a lot of it is open space, uh, but there's other needs, uh, but having the committee really takes, I know from a council's perspective, takes a lot of that work, and it's hard work, and puts it on the Community Preservation Committee, and they're doing a great job, so. Oh, he wants to speak again. He definitely wants a raise next year.
I just wanted to uh thank you all, uh, City Council, because a lot, most of, all of these projects really rely on your support for, with the community members to bring them to the, to bring the applications to the CPC for consideration, and we are adding one more, um, one, one more uh issue that we're gonna be looking for, which is, we, we're seeking to fund underfunded areas, which includes underfunded um categories of CPC funds, so affordable housing and historic preservation, and also underfunded geographic areas. There are some parts of Malden that haven't uh had a CPC project, so I look forward to working with the city councilors of wards where there hasn't been a CPC project yet to date. We have a, um, we will have about nine, about a, $1 million coming in uh for the next fiscal year. And we are opening up the application round in, on April 20th. We're gonna be putting efforts into making it an online application, so it'll be more accessible. Um, so, uh, we are having a public hearing on March 16th, so we invite you all to, uh, anyone who's still listening, or um please invite your colleagues and your constituents, um, so we can give people information about how to apply on March 16th, and then April 20th, we're gonna open up the pre-application process. We do accept off-cycle applications for um, for city projects, but we're encouraging the public to really stick to this application window, which will be April 20th to uh essentially June 30th.
Any other questions? Counselor, Counselor Murphy?
Yes, um, well, I. Like to um obviously make a motion to approve the. Seconded by Counselor Sika. Once we do that, could I have the mic back for a minute? Please?
Yep. Okay, we're gonna do a, we're, here, everybody? On Council Murphy's motion to approve Paper, let me make sure I got the right one here. What is it? 4122, seconded by Counselor Sika. Call, call her roll. Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Sika. Simonelli. Winslow. Spatafora. Spatafora, yes. Motion carries. Council Murphy, you have the floor.
Thank you. Um, and yes, I wanted to um kind of second what Counselor Condon and Counselor Spatafora already said. I was kind of saving that for the last bit. Um, the CPA has done a tremendous amount of work, um, just even from the initial formation of it. I believe um prior to the expenditure of this fund, there was about $3.8 million. If my figure is correct, so there was a significant amount of money in the budget, and I know you are going to have a meeting, um, but my suggestion would be that um we find a time for you to come in and do a presentation, because we are live on television prior to your, your public meetings, so that you could kind of outline to the general public, you know, what the categories are, what the requirements are, and some of the projects that have happened, um, that, you know, might spark the, the community's imagination of what they might request, and not just what's in our minds. So, I think um we'll definitely put out an invite there for the committee to come in and just give us a little, you know, 10 or 15-minute dog and pony show, so that maybe you can get some PR out to the general public to help.
I would be happy to do that, anytime.
Okay, thank you.
I don't know if you know, but you, the 10 or 15 minutes, if you've been watching this meeting, it's not gonna be 10 or 15 minutes. Just be ready. Anybody else? Okay, great work. Thank you again for coming. So, that motion carried. Next order of business, there are several financial papers to be a little bit more efficient, today's word of the day is efficiency. We're going to, I'm gonna ask the uh Chairperson of Finance if we could read them all and then vote them all at once. Is that fine, Madam Chair? Hold on, I got, you got it on?
That would be fine, and if no one has any problem after you read them, I'm going to go through the reasons for all of them, and someone can stop me if they want to.
I'd like to stop. Okay. The plan is, we're gonna read all these. These are all coming down to be transferred. So, clerk, can you read the numbers, please?
Paper 40-22, order that the sum of $1,000, uh, $1,193,359.19 is appropriated into parking garage expense account 00104815731 for the operations of the parking garages in the downtown. Order that the sum of $250,000 is appropriated from available general funds free cash and transferred to police overtime account 00102105150. Order that the sum of $250,000 is appropriated from available general fund free cash and transferred to fire overtime account number 00102205150. Order that the sum of $250,000 is appropriated from available, available general fund free cash and transferred to maintenance of school buildings, account number 00101955254. Order that the sum of 204, $259 is appropriated from available general fund free cash and transferred to energy efficiency capital account number 40381345860 for the ongoing energy efficiency upgrades in the school buildings. Order that the sum of $58,000, $85,000 is appropriated from available general fund free cash and transferred to parking equipment account number 00104815361 for parking meter upgrades. And finally, order that the sum of $25,000 is appropriated from available general fund free cash and transferred to City Council Professional Services account 00101115300 for diversity, equity, and inclusion training.
Council Murphy for the papers.
Okay, so that, we're gonna take the first one first, because the first one's just a little bit different. So, as you noticed when they were read, the remaining ones all are transferring money from one account to another. The first one is not. It's just appropriating money, and it's basically associated with an accounting technicality. When the MRA merged into the city, okay, what they did was they, they basically booked in the budget the net revenue. So, take, for example, they got $1 million in revenue from parking um, uh, expense, parking revenue, and the expenses were $600,000 for the parking department. They budgeted $400,000, okay? When in fact, that's not the way that the accounting works, okay? They thought, because we have SP who handles all that, that we would get the net revenue, but we don't. We get the full $1 million, and then we get the full $600,000. So, the money has been coming. money has been coming in. It's sitting there in an account, and we're just appropriating it into the parking department account, the rev, that revenue money, so that we can pay the expenses that we need to pay. So, it's basically a wash. We're not losing any money. We're not gaining any money. It's just an accounting, you know, technicality that we need to book it in a different way. So, that's what this is, which is why it's not a transfer from a different depo, a different, you know, line item. So, just to clear that one up, if anyone has any, because that one is a little odd. If anyone has any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer it in a little more detail. If not, motion to approve. Okay, all right. So, we're good with that one. It's all, it's all one paper, but we just want, just want to make sure everybody's good with that one. Yeah, we can take one vote, but I just want to make sure, okay. The next two have to do with overtime. For those of you who have been through the budget cycle before, you'll know that we never give the fire department or the police department all the money they're asking for for overtime. We always make them come back and, you know, see where they are at a certain point in time, and then they'll put in the request for money. These two dollar amounts, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the police overtime and the two hundred and fifty for the fire overtime, adding those to what's been spent to date is basically in line with what they normally incur over the course of a twelve-month period. So, we have spoken with both chiefs. They feel that this will get them through the end of the fiscal year, and looking once again to have these approved. Any, anybody have any questions on any of that? Okay. Okay. Moving, moving down. Okay, the maintenance of school buildings, I think it was alluded to earlier tonight by Mr. Hogan. Our school buildings are getting older. They are not new schools anymore. They're going on 25 years, and they do need a significant amount of work. This is money that needs to be appropriated. Let's see, there's only forty thousand dollars left for the school year for the remaining, the remaining months of this fiscal year for seven schools. There's over 1.3 million square feet of schools, and that's 38 cents per square foot for maintenance. The industry standard is 78 cents. So, this money is just needed to keep us, keep, keep the shop moving, I guess, so to speak. The lights on, and the pumps running, so the heat's going. So, we certainly will be having more discussion about money that will be needed to support the school maintenance budget as we move forward. Okay. All right, two hundred and forty thousand. Okay, this one is actually a fun one. Okay. If we spend two hundred and four thousand dollars and two hundred and fifty-nine dollars, okay, to continue with our ongoing energy upgrades in the school building, as hot as this is to believe, we will receive from National Grid rebates in the amount of 769,128 dollars. And that literally, I know, I know, it's like, as I said, it's the most fun one. It's the one you want to start with. And literally, that, when those, when those rebates come in, it'll go into free cash. So, it's kind of like a net gain of over half a million dollars. So, it's really kind of a no-brainer. Any questions? Anyone want to clap? No? Just, I know. It's, 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 it's a, it's a good, it's a good, it's a good one.
Can we save that for motion to adjourn, then we can clap?
I know, I know, I know. Okay, the eighty-five thousand dollars, this is for the parking meters. Okay. Unfortunately, we were told when we bought the parking meters that they would work basically forever, and we wouldn't have to upgrade them. Guess what? They don't. We need to take the heads off the parking meters. We need to send them back to the manufacturers. They need to upgrade the operating system, and then they need to be reinstalled on the, on the, all the meters throughout the city. This is the cost of having the upgrade, of the shipping, the packing, the mailing, everything, getting them back installed. So, in order to continue with our parking program within Squeer, this is an expense that we have, no alternative but to approve unless we just don't want to have parking meters anymore. Yes?
Go along, Counselor. Just turn your mic on. Give me one second.
No, I just want to point out that the main reason is because the telecom companies are phasing out 2G and 3G technologies. So, this is paying for that upgrade so they can connect with the new 5G technology. Thanks.
So, and I appreciate it. Did leave that little piece, that little piece out. And the last one is basically a 25,000 dollars for the training that we all approved, for DEI training. So, this will actually hire Manville, Man, Man sir, Manville, by the corporation that we agreed to hire to lead us through the DEI training for the City Council.
Any questions? No questions. Oh, sorry, Counselor. Counselor McDonald.
Um, no specific questions, but just a, a wondering and a comment. You know, for some of these things, obviously, the, there's always budget adjustments in the year. There's things that come up that are anticipated, but for the things that we know about or that we should be, you know, anticipating overtime or maintenance costs. So, it's just, I'm, uh, flagging that I, I want to know about, more about those when we get to the budget process, and like, why, why do it this way, and why not better plan upfront if we anticipate those expenses?
There's a reason.
I, that's all.
Motion to approve? Oh, sorry.
Cologne Hayes. Condon. Crowe. Linehan. McDonald. Murphy. O'Malley. Seika. Seminelli. Winslow. Spatafor. So, we're going to take, we're going to accept all the committee reports, correct, Council Seminelli, all at once?
Yeah, we're just taking them all. I'm not going to let him speak.
Paper, paper seventy-two dash twenty-two, seventy-three dash twenty-two, seventy-four dash twenty-two, and seventy-five dash twenty-two. Yep. On Council Seminelli's motion, Seminelli's motion to receive the committee report, all in favor? All opposed. Council Seminelli for the committee.
Uh, these are reappointments, Mr. President. They were recommended favorably by the committee, and make a motion to confirm.
Thank you, Council Seminelli. Very efficient. Any questions for Mr. Seminelli? Okay, CNN, oh, Council McDonald. Sorry, I'm looking at, Council McDonald, you get the floor.
Just, um, the, I think Ralph Long's appointment is a, is a new appointment to the Disability Commission. Not a reappointment. Okay.
So, let the record show that Council McDonald made the correction that Mr. Long, who's being appointed to the Disability Commission, is a new member, not, not being reappointed. Clerk will have that updated?
I, I think it's correct on the agenda.
Okay. Okay, so on Council Seminelli, oh wait, Council Linehan is late. I'm sorry. I'm looking at the lights. Council Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm, I'm sorry to delay this. I just noticed that Dr. Reddington Wild's name is spelled wrong. Her first name, she's listed as Roseanne Eddington Wild, and it's Roxanne Reddington Wild, I think. I just want to make sure we get it corrected for the record. Okay. No, I don't think so.
Any other questions? No corrections? Okay. On Council Seminelli's motion to grant, seconded by Council Seika, all in favor? All opposed? Eyes have it. Appointments are confirmed. Next order of business. Is the docket clear? Wow. Okay, the docket is clear. Personal privilege. I'm going to go with the first person I saw, which I believe is Counselor Winslow. Counsel Winslow.
Okay, um, I know it's always important to talk about our democratic processes. For those of Malden residents that are registered as Democrats, this Saturday at 10 o'clock, the Malden Democratic Party is having a caucus, which is your opportunity to vote on delegates to the state convention, where that's convention then votes statewide candidates. Part of the caucus will also involve some presentations by those statewide candidates. So, that's something you do have to preregister at. So, do look for that, you know, on our Facebook page and that. I did reach out to the Chair, Jerry Leonio, of the Malden Republican Party. The Republican Party's not having anything comparable coming up. They've, they're organized. So, so I just want to let, let people know, as we see, you know, the folks in Ukraine fight so hard for their democracy, this is your opportunity to exercise your democratic rights and participate in the future. You know, this is a year that, you know, we know we're electing new governor, and, and many other seats are open. So, this is the first step in that process. So, encourage everybody to learn about it and participate. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Winslow. Council Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two very quick updates. I wanted to let the community know that tomorrow at 6:00 PM, for anyone who's interested in the efforts to turn the former Malden District Court on Summer Street into a Community Arts and Culture Center, we're having our monthly steering committee meeting. That's going to be on Zoom. The link is at cityofmalden.org, and I'll post it to Facebook and other places tomorrow as well. We are gearing up for a big public meeting sometime this spring, where we're going to be really excited to show architectural renderings, results of the community survey on what people envision for the future use of the courthouse. But our monthly meetings are also open to the public, and we'd love to have some more folks participating. I think we have two or three more before we do that big public unveiling. So, we're very excited with what we've learned with our consultants and what we have to show. So, encourage anyone who's interested in the future of that Arts and Culture Center to participate. And then, I know a few weeks ago, we had a presentation on Malden Porchfest. I wanted to also let folks know that we've officially picked a date. It's going to be June 11th. That's going to be citywide, and there is a website and a Facebook page that you can now follow. It's maldenporchfest.com, and the Facebook page is facebook.com/porchfestmalden. So, if anybody wants to refer, anyone who's interested in performing or hosting a musical act, you don't have to have a porch. You can also have people just on your yard or your sidewalk, or if you want to volunteer or donate, there's lots of ways to get involved. So, I would encourage anybody to go check it out. And I know the group organizing it is very excited that the website and the sign-up's finally live. So, definitely go check that out. And that's all I've got.
Thank you, Counselor Linehan. I will volunteer the bar. Not the same. Counselor Hayes.
I was just going to announce Porchfest, so thank you, Amanda, for doing that. It's very exciting. The, the website actually was launched tonight, and we're looking for a lot of volunteers. It's going to be a, a, a large, like, it's just a lot of work. So, we need a lot of volunteers, and it's going to be, you know, people helping to get bands or wherever, porches, just, you know, block parties. So, whatever you want to do, please get involved. Sign up on the, on the website. Thank you.
Okay. Any other lights? Oh, that's my favorite thing. Who said that? Counselor Crowe. On Counselor Crowe's motion to adjourn, seconded by Counselor Murphy. All in favor? All opposed. Eyes have it. Motion to adjourn. Great work.